Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to session this meeting of the Tacoma Park City Council. We'll stand in city clerk, call the roll tonight.
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kovar.
Here.
Councilmember Mayle.
Here.
Councilmember Seaman.
President.
Councilmember Smith.
I'm John.
Councilmember Self.
Here.
All right, welcome, everyone. This evening, there are no changes to our agenda, though there was an update on the consent agenda. We have an Item C, that's a single reading ordinance authorizing cooperative purchase contract related to low and moderate income energy efficiency improvement. So that was added earlier this week. On upcoming agenda, next Wednesday, we do not have a city council meeting. It is the fifth Wednesday of the month, so we're taking the day off. So no meeting next Wednesday. On Tuesday, June 6th, we continue with the final of the three community conversations we've been having with Montgomery College regarding their campus. This meeting will be held at the college in the Science North Building, Room SN 100, and it begins at 7:30 PM. That is Tuesday, June 6th. Then Tuesday, June 7th, our council meeting will be back here. City council will meet in a closed session to talk about personnel issues and the police department at 6:00 PM. The public meeting will begin at 7:30. We have a public hearing that night on a bond issuance under Maryland Local Government Infrastructure Program to finance library and community center renovations and roadway and street scape improvements. So that's a public hearing that starts at 7:30. Our voting session on Wednesday, June 7th includes the first reading ordinance authorizing bond issuance under Maryland Local Government Infrastructure Program to finance library and community center renovations and roadway street scape improvements, and the second reading ordinance authorizing FY 2017 budget amendment number three. Our work session that evening will be a discussion of police department operations. This will be the first of a number of meetings we will be having regarding our police department. Then on Tuesday, June 14th, we will have a reception to honor our city attorney, Sue Silver, upon her retirement as the city attorney. So please join us from 6:30 to 7:30 PM on June 14th in the atrium here to honor Sue Silver. During our meeting on Wednesday, June 14th, that will be here in the auditorium, we will, on our voting session, have a resolution recognizing Sue Silver for her years of service as the city attorney. We will have the second reading ordinance authorizing bond issuance under Maryland Local Government Infrastructure Program to finance library and community center renovations and roadway street scape improvements. Our work session on June 14th will include a presentation and discussion of community grant award recommendations, and a discussion of proposed amendments to the city code for the operating of wheelchairs and bicycles on sidewalks. Then on Thursday, June 15th, the city council will be having a joint meeting with the recreation committee. This is a meeting that is open to the public, and we hope people will join us. That will be at 7:00 PM at the Tacoma Park Recreation Center. So not here, but at the rec center on New Hampshire Avenue, and that's June 15th. Then on Tuesday, June 20th, we're back here in the azalea room, and we're continuing our conversation of the process and criteria for the hiring of a new police chief. That is on Tuesday, June 20th. Then on Wednesday, June 21st, our regularly scheduled weekly council meeting, we will be celebrating Immigrant Heritage Month. This is the second year in a row we've been doing this. We did it last year, and we thought it was so successful that we would do the same thing this year. We will hold the council meeting at the Tacoma Park Rec Center. So again, not here, but at the rec center on New Hampshire Avenue, and we will begin at 6:30 with a reception. So we hope everyone can attend that meeting on June 21st. After the reception, celebrating Immigrant Heritage Month, our regular meeting will start with a public hearing on the qualities and characteristics of a police chief. So this is an opportunity for members of the public to come speak about what they'd like to see in our new police chief. We will have a proclamation celebrating Immigrant Heritage Month, and a voting session on a single reading ordinance approving the FY 2018 community grants awards. And our work session that night will be a discussion of the emergency tree fund program that we just put in the budget we passed. So that takes us till the end of June. It's going to be a busy month. All right, now let's turn to public comments. This evening, we will start with public comments on voting items. Our first voting item this evening is a resolution renaming Columbus Day as Indigenous Peoples' Day. If you would like to comment on this voting item, please come to the podium. Mr. Lovellis will get you the microphone in one moment. I've got to turn. Now you're on.
Thank you to Kate, our wonderful mayor and my friend, for hearing me and taking action on a conversation last fall regarding changing Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day in Tacoma Park. Thank you for the opportunity to address the city council regarding this issue. My name is Jody Sarkozy-Bonacy. I have lived in Tacoma Park with my husband Stewart and two kids for six and a half years. Prior to moving here, we lived and still own a home on land that is technically part of the Great Sioux Nation in the Black Hills of South Dakota, established by the 1848 Fort Laramie Treaty, land that is rightfully owned by the Lakota, Dakota, and Nokota Nations. We love living here in Tacoma Park. We cherish the diversity and inclusive, open, and accepting nature of the community. In that sense, it feels very safe and welcoming, which is why my family believes it is well past time to abolish Columbus Day in favor of a day that honors our indigenous peoples. I think we all know by now that Columbus was a murderer, rapist, and slave owner. He did not discover America, as it was already inhabited by millions of indigenous peoples. Rather, his actions amounted to genocide against the Taino and other peoples of the Caribbean. He brought disease, forced Christianity, and was a catalyst for opening up Native Peoples' land to colonization. Much like Andrew Jackson, Columbus is not a hero to be honored. For the past 17 years, I have been working alongside Native leaders and community-based organizations to address this legacy. Across the Western Hemisphere, high rates of poverty, disease, substance abuse, violence, and suicide continue to impact generations of Native youth, robbing them of opportunities to thrive and live full lives. In 2002, I spent a considerable amount of time in the Shion River Lakota Reservation in South Dakota. During that summer, I think there were at least seven youth suicides and many more attempts. And it keeps happening. This is the legacy of colonization and the true legacy of Columbus. Despite these challenges, Native people continue to embrace and practice their culture. They're working to revive their languages, art, traditions, and ceremonies. The love of family and place is paramount, and they are resilient in the face of immense challenges. Fortified with scant resources, indigenous community leaders work very hard to reverse the impacts of generational poverty, racism, and inequity that is rooted in a system that has oppressed and stolen from Native peoples for hundreds of years. One needs not look further than the resistance at Standing Rock against the Dakota Access Pipeline for evidence of a people determined to have their voices be heard to protect their water and families. Dave Archambeau, chairman of the Standing Rock Sioux Tribe, said, "This is a corporation that is coming forward and just bulldozing through our concern for tribes." Is that my time?
No, you have 30 seconds. Go ahead.
The bulldozing of indigenous lives, indigenous lands, and indigenous rights all began with Columbus's invasion in 1492. Words matter, and honoring Columbus for the holiday implies that we do not care about his treatment of indigenous peoples and the impacts of those actions today. Native youth continue to pay a very high price for the colonization of the Americas, and as residents of Tacoma Park, I believe we need to follow the lead of other cities like Denver and Seattle, and even the state of South Dakota, and finally abolish Columbus Day and designate it as Indigenous Peoples' Day to honor the First Nations of this continent. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Lovellis, go ahead.
Okay, my name is Pat Lovellis, your official peace delegate, 7620 Maple Avenue, Tacoma Park, Maryland. I want to tell you people that I'm fully supporting changing the name Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day. It shows that we actually care and are willing to stand out and be counted among the people who support the lives of the Native Americans and other indigenous peoples around. I also want to tell people that I, for one person, even when I was a kid in school, did not like Columbus Day, because I remember one time I told them, "He is a thug, nothing but a no-good, three-bit thug." And I was sent home from school about that, because I told them about that and the fact we stole all our lands ever since then, and like she was saying, Columbus had beaten them and raped them and everything else, and we should celebrate him as a serial killer, because he killed so many natives by his behavior. And his legislature is still killing more and more, like she said, through drug addiction and alcoholism. Look at Alaska. Look at Alaska, a bottle of whiskey up there goes for $400, and the people are smuggling it up to them. And that's wrong. It's destroying families and whole villages up there. And I'd like to ask people to, in the peace communities, can you please stand up with us against the Dakota Access Pipeline and the Keystone Pipeline? And anything else that they're going to do to make it life harder for the Native Americans? It's their water supply. It's also our crops that we're going to be getting too if that pipeline leaks, or should I say not if, but when that pipeline leaks? And I don't like the idea of that. I don't like to see my pastor and tax dollars going up in crap like that. I'd like to see if we could have a rally that day, maybe with the Lakota tribe and the other Native Americans in this area. I'd like to see if we can have a rally right here in Tacoma Park as we switch over and say, "Yes, this is Indigenous Peoples' Day. You're not welcome here, Columbus. It's not your day anymore. It's our day, and we're going to name it Indigenous Peoples' Day." So please, stand up with our people, because I consider them my people too. And stand up with our people, and do everything you can to work for peace. Don't be a hypocrite by saying you won't support the war, but let the Indians go without, because that's being a hypocrite. And I'm not no hypocrite. I hope not any people out there who are listening are too, because I think it's time to stand up and be counted and work for peace, and also work for the rights of the Native Americans. Happy Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Thank you, Mr. Lovellis.
Hello. My name is Nicholas Courtney. I'm a member of the Makaw Nation of Washington State. My first statement is on behalf of the Piscataway Indian Nation, specifically Sebi Madrein Tayak, born and raised in College Park on Philadelphia Avenue. He attended Tacoma Park Elementary, Tacoma Park Middle School, and Blair High School, and wishes that he could be here. His message is, "On behalf of the Piscataway Indian Nation, the state-recognized tribe on whose ancestral homelands we now live, the Tayak family, the Chiefs family, decrees its strong opposition to Tacoma Park's recognition of Columbus Day. We have fought for decades against this so-called holiday on both local and national levels, and it pains us that a celebration of the genocide of our people persists. Many of our families live in Tacoma Park, and we recommend Indigenous Peoples' Day as an alternative, recognizing the resilience and strength of your indigenous neighbors in Maryland and across the hemisphere. Wenashenee," which means "thank you." And now my testimony. Recognizing Indigenous Peoples' Day is an opportunity to educate our youth and our broader community about the positive and enduring contributions of indigenous peoples, as well as the ongoing challenges faced by Native communities. This is also an opportunity for others to better appreciate how to become allies in breaking down the remaining cultural and institutional barriers of discrimination. By changing this holiday, you are encouraging dialogue to take place between communities about the contributions of indigenous people, and most importantly, their continued involvement in the cultural fabric of this community and the entire country. By changing the name of this oppressive holiday, you, the city, are demonstrating to the original inhabitants of this territory that the city values their history, culture, and welfare, as well as their contributions to the local economy as attorneys, educators, doctors, construction workers, and entrepreneurs. Abolishing the celebration of Christopher Columbus will further demonstrate the city's commitment to the project of social justice, and will continue to showcase Tacoma Park as a community of acceptance and a leader in equality and support for all identities and cultures. I encourage you all, the city council, the mayor, and Tacoma Park residents, to continue to strive to build relationship with your local indigenous tribes and their citizens, and embrace their rich culture and history as assets to your community. I encourage you all do not lose hope during this journey, and to be meaningful and respectful of the process of building grounded and honest relationship. I thank you all for your time and for giving me the honor and the privilege to testify before you. Clacko.
Thank you.
Love it.
Would anyone else like to speak to the resolution renaming Columbus Day as Indigenous
Hello, my name is Aluk Edwardsen, and I live on Carroll Avenue 7057 here in Tacoma. Thank you guys for taking the time to talk about this important issue. I myself am an Uprah Eskimo from northern Alaska. I've, hello. I've lived here for a couple of years, and like many of the people that, like all of the people that have come before me, we've discussed in this nation in different forums and in many city councils like this across the country, a lot of the things that we already know about Columbus. He was painted as a saint who discovered America, and we know through a lot of the things that were said before that that just wasn't true. And the fact that our government not only decides to celebrate this holiday, but it's a paid holiday, where people actually get paid to stay home on, is really a slap in the face to many, to myself and many other Native Americans I know, because Columbus Day is widely regarded as a day of genocide. And the indigenous peoples movement is, like some of the people that had said before, is an opportunity not only to acknowledge the harm that was done and continues to be perpetrated on Native peoples today, but an opportunity to engage in discussion around healing. Because for so much of American history, it wasn't only physical acts that were done to Native peoples, but treaties were broken. They weren't given spaces to speak what, of the atrocities that were going on, and for much of Native American history, and even today in many places down here, Native Americans are looked at as wards of the state. So much of that language still continues within our government systems that shows Native Americans, or that tells Native Americans that you're in fear, you can't take care of yourselves. Let us take care of your education. Let us take care of your budget. Let us take care of your health systems. And what we see today in many Native American communities are, including my own home community, are rampant rates of drug and alcohol abuse. Suicide is through the roof. I personally have had two uncles die of suicide and two cousins in my immediate family. Lots of depression and anxiety, and lots of social issues that aren't the result of genetics, but are the result of a legacy of systematic oppression that began with Columbus. And I think changing, turning this day around, not only acknowledging the atrocity, but acknowledging the opportunity for growth and the opportunity for healing within all of the peoples of America, I think, is something that I personally would be very grateful to see. And thank you to those who came before and spoke. It's really warm, it warms my heart to hear this here in Tacoma. So, thank you.
Anyone else would like to comment on the resolution renaming Columbus Day as Indigenous Peoples' Day? Well, thank you, everyone who came out. The next voting item we have tonight is a first reading ordinance authorizing the FY 2017 budget amendment number three. Any public comments on that? We have a consent agenda tonight. On the consent agenda is a single reading ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a contract of agreement with CHEER for the Lunch and Learn Summer Program, a single reading ordinance authorizing the repair and upgrade of the auditorium projection system, and the single reading ordinance authorizing cooperative purchase contract related to low and moderate income energy efficiency improvements. Any public comments on the consent agenda this evening? No? Then we will move on to general public comments. So if there's public comments on anything else, Mr. Lovellis, go ahead.
Yes, I'd like to tell everybody out there that I had a wonderful time. You people made my birthday a memorable experience by having to celebrate Tacoma right on May 20th. I turned 62 while I was down there. And I want to thank the city very much. It was a wonderful experience. The bands were beautiful. And by the way, the papousas were great. Whoever cooked those papousas did a wonder. It was great. And also, I'd like to ask people, if anyone is thinking about the Fourth of July, I'm going to be needing a way to get somebody to wheel me down to the City Hall area where they have the antique cars, since I'm going to probably be in one. And I'm going to need somebody to wheel me a couple of blocks down. I hope it's not impossible, but I really, really want to get to this parade. Because I'm usually in the parade, and I feel very proud to be able, and honored by my city to have me in the parade. And I'd like to ask people if you know anybody who can help, because Candace Wolf is having hip surgery, and she's not going to be able to help me out after June 10th. And it's going to be pretty hard after that, because she's the one that wheels me down here, and she's older than I am. I want to tell you people out there that, again, this city has really shown me a lot of what really love is all about. And yes, I want this Indigenous Day celebrated this year. Don't wait any longer. I want it done this year. The quicker we take the thug's name out of there, the better off we'll be, and just put him in the list with serial killers and other sadistic criminals. And that's it. Thank you very much for letting me share.
Thank you.
Peace be with you, and peace be with all of you.
Thank you, Mr. Lovellis. Any other public comments this evening?
I submitted nine copies for the council and mayor. My name is Saachi Even Eklay Kalsa. I'm from Ward 2, 6719 Conway Avenue. And I don't usually read this, but I'm just going to. "I come primarily representing myself, but also partly exploring options for the newly-formed and still-forming group of neighbors who are interested in the future of the McLaughlin School and also the John Nevins Andrews School sites. As you may know, the McLaughlin School property is currently listed on the annual county tax lien sale and auction, which will take place on June 12th in three weeks. With such a storied site, there are a lot of unknowns and possibilities of what could happen to it in the short and longer term. The unique and narrow, deep orientation of the lot places much of it directly in the backyards of 24 homes on Goody and Conway Avenues. And while it does have a tiny frontage onto New Hampshire Avenue at Poplar, the fate of this property will likely have a high impact on its immediate and not-so-immediate neighbors. The possibilities of what could come, or what county agencies or city agencies might do with this property are numerous, but a possible favorable solution may come from local government ownership of or a stake in this property. It is evident that the city council may not want to invest much money at this time, given other current projects and priorities, and given the recent financial investment in the adjacent wooded parcel, now known as Dorothy's Woods. However, I come here tonight to ask that the council explore the feasibility of being a fiscal agent, as they were with the wooded lot parcel auction, collecting and aggregating citizen funds and possibly contributing as well, in order to submit a bid on June 12th. It is unclear yet if becoming more entangled in the debt and ownership of this property is a wise decision, or even if the funds raised would be sufficient to compete with other interested parties. But given the short timeline and the few council meetings between now and then, we would like to quickly and broadly explore the feasibility of several options. We have already been treated to great prompt customer service from several city staff members, and some county ones too. Yet another benefit of having an independent and responsive local government. Thank you for your time and quick attention."
Arthur David Olson, Hancock Avenue. "I always introduce myself with both my first and middle names. I was named after my two grandfathers, and I try to give them equal time. Since birth, names have been important for me. I'm glad to see the city council considering renaming a holiday Indigenous Peoples' Day. Names of holidays are important. Names of streets are also important. In the historic American figures section of town, we have several streets named for Confederate figures, among them General Robert E. Lee, General Stonewall Jackson, and Spy Bell Boyd. I'd like to see the council take a leadership role in renaming these streets. There are plenty of possibilities. We can honor another Civil War-era woman and covert operative with Tubman Avenue. We can honor two Maryland politicians with Blair Lee Avenue. Even if we're daunted by the effort required to get county and postal service approval for street name changes, there is one place where we don't need such approval: city parks. Renaming Jackson Boyd Neighborhood Park would eliminate two references at one time. Seems natural to call on our new commemoration committee for help here. I hope the council will ask them to first identify all city streets and parks named for Confederate figures, then make recommendations for renaming them. Our official peace delegate is fond of saying, 'If I can do it, you can do it.' I'm confident that if New Orleans can take down statues of Confederate figures, we can take down street and park signs. I hope the council will take a first step toward doing so.
Hello, good evening. I'm Casey Kostick. I live in Ward 3, and I'm chair of the Safe Road Grace Committee. I just wanted to comment briefly on the traffic calming discussion later this evening, and reiterate some of the suggestions put forth in the committee's original recommendation. As we pointed out, speed bumps are currently the default speed traffic calming method in the city, and we found that there were several significant issues with that, including a reduction in response time for emergency vehicles, increased pollution and noise, creating a hassle and a risk for people who are biking, as well as simply being uncomfortable to drive over. Because speed bumps are so entrenched in the culture of this city, we feel like there needs to be a change to encourage movement towards a new paradigm. We recommend changing the municipal code so that it encourages other forms of traffic calming, as well as creating a plan for considering other options. City staff noted a concern regarding having a rigid list of alternatives to work through when they're considering traffic calming methods. While it's understandable that this sort of list might not provide flexibility, we feel that there does need to be some type of incentive or methodology that encourages both residents and city staff to think about alternatives, whether it's a list format or some other format that works better than that. Without that, residents will tend to focus on a desire for speed bumps, and it will be easy to continue to install speed bumps, because they are relatively inexpensive and easy to install compared to other methods. As we noted in our report, we also recommend a more thorough consideration of whether traffic calming is needed in each situation, and we would like to encourage the council and staff to consider ways to replace existing speed bumps as roads are repaved and repaired in the future. Finally, I pointed out in an email to all of you and my comments last month that there are some significant concerns regarding the racial equity impacts of having a resident-driven traffic calming policy. I don't think there are easy answers to resolve this, but I do think there needs to be an awareness of it and the beginning of a discussion about how we can work towards improving the situation. Thank you.
Any other public comments this evening?
Hi, thank you for coming, everybody, and especially Captain Collington. He's come to our meetings. Parents especially, to Dallas Ward 2, Mary Jane Machuie, all backwards here. Three things I'm really, as you all fired up about. One is helping disabled people, two, affordable housing, and three, street gentrification. I get very angry when I heard the word "traffic calming." I think it's, like I said, I think the lady said about it being racially unfair. I noticed that, that I know, I have a friend who used to live near Howard University. You could tell where all the white people moved in, because they got all this speed humps and the street narrowings. And you notice where there's, like apartments, there's hardly going to be any speed humps, because it's the residents, usually the wealthy residents who live in the houses are going to complain about, they have to, they're scared their children will get killed. They're 100% sure their child will be killed if they don't get a speed hump. And we've got five in two blocks that I live in, including one on the catty corner of my street, which almost had us seriously injured, because people go fast when they pass our house now, because you go over five speed humps, and they get angry, so they put on the gas when they go past our driveway. So, I mean, I've had a near miss from that. I never had threat- I never had, 32 years there, I've never had a near miss, except then after those speed humps. And the street narrowing is crazy. I hate to complain, but I have poor visual depth perception. My doctor says I can drive on normal streets, but even he, Dr. Baum, he's a very good ophthalmologist, told me he's, we're known for our narrow streets, and they're not normal, most of them. Anyways, and I wanted to thank the mayor for the rec department and the Council for voting money for us, and I look forward to meeting with you. I don't know how it's going to be done or when, but I hope soon, because three years ago I asked for one. But I want to thank you very much that you're going to set aside money for class or classes. And also, Mayor Stewart, thank you for telling me if I knew people are having a hard time paying for their mortgages, to let you know.
Their property taxes, Mary Jane.
I'm sorry.
I wish I could help with that, too. Property taxes.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. Property taxes.
Just want that out there on the public.
Because I'm getting more and more, I try not to be upset, but there's more and more, there's three houses, three houses are going like $500,000, $600,000 range that have been built up and are renovated a block from where I live, two blocks from where I live, actually. And I get really more upset when I see more of this coming. But thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comments this evening? No? All right, then. Tonight, we have a proclamation on Gun Violence Awareness Day, which is June 2nd. I'll just read this. It is a proclamation on National Gun Violence Awareness Day in Tacoma Park, June 2nd, 2017. Whereas every day 93 Americans are killed by gun violence, and whereas Americans are 25 times more likely to be killed with guns than people in other developed countries. And whereas mayors and law enforcement officers know their communities best, are the most familiar with local criminal activity and how to address it, and are best positioned to understand how to keep their residents safe. And whereas June 2nd, 2017 would have been the 20th birthday of Hadiya Pendleton, a teenager who marched in President Obama's second inaugural parade and was tragically shot and killed just weeks later. Whereas to help honor her and the 93 Americans whose lives are cut short and the countless survivors who are injured by shootings every day, a national coalition of organizations has designated June 2nd, 2017 as the Third Annual National Gun Violence Awareness Day. And whereas the idea was inspired by a group of friends who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange, they chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods, and orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. And whereas anyone can join this campaign by pledging to wear orange on June 2nd to help raise awareness about gun violence. And whereas by wearing orange on June 2nd, Americans will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives and lost human potential stolen by gun violence. And whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands. Now therefore, I, Kate Stewart, Mayor of the City of Tacoma Park, Maryland, declare June 2nd to be Gun Violence Awareness Day in Tacoma Park. I encourage all residents to support local efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives. And then on June 3rd, wear orange on June 2nd, and then on June 3rd, wear orange again at 1:00 PM at the gazebo. That we will be, a group of local residents will be holding an observation of National Gun Violence Awareness Day. So I hope to see everyone there on June 3rd at 1:00 PM. All right, now we'll turn to council comments. Any council comments this evening? Nobody? Councilmember Kovar.
Thank you, ma'am. I just wanted to make one observation, and I know we're in the early stages of this, so this is not a criticism, just an observation, and the staff can think about this. We've adopted earlier in the year the racial equity impact statement that we talk about for each item that we consider on the agenda. And I think that in some cases, and I was looking at the different agenda items today, it says, "Well, there are no adverse effects," or "No one is treated disproportionately." And that, some of them, the implication seems to be that the default would be that there would be a negative impact on what we're doing, but I think it would be better if we could find a way, and I don't have all the answers on how this would work, but to look for the positive aspect of some of the agenda items, and even, for example, the Indigenous Peoples', one is a positive statement, as well as just it doesn't have a negative impact. And so, I know it's a work in progress, and so, again, I don't mean that as a criticism as much as we should try to find a broader way of interpreting that at times. So I'll just leave it at that. Thanks.
Great. Councilmember Schultz.
I'd like to address the status of the Purple Line. The Purple Line proposes to build a station stop at the intersection of New Hampshire Avenue and University Boulevard, in the middle of University Boulevard in front of the Transit Center. And since that's my ward, I guess it's sort of fallen onto me to be able to be sort of the primary watchdog about activities regarding the Purple Line. And as many of you probably know, if you've read in the Washington Post or other sources, we got a big piece of bad news this week because the judge, Richard J. Leone, a federal district judge, handed down his opinion that he was not going to allow the project to proceed just yet because he felt that the information that had been supplied in response to plaintiff's claims was insufficient. I read that opinion, a 12-page opinion, very, very carefully, and shared my opinions with my colleagues on the City Council. And so, I will kind of try to keep this as short as possible. My opinion is not mine alone, but shared by many people who, in government and in private, in the private sector, that the opinion that was rendered was wrong, based on wrong interpretations of federal law and precedents, judicial precedents. And basically, it comes down to, I guess what most easily can be said is that in considering, when a judge is asked to consider an action by a federal agency, the judge is not supposed to supplant the work of the federal agency and the people that work in that agency in making their decisions. All they are required to be able to do as a judge is to interpret whether or not they followed the law, followed all the regulations in making whatever decisions that they made. And while the judge, in his opinion, acknowledges the existence of such statutes and laws, he goes ahead, in any case, does the exact thing, which is to render his opinion that, in his opinion, the Federal Transit Administration's decision about ridership was arbitrary and capricious, and that they, but he doesn't deny that the analysis that they did was wrong. He just said that they didn't try hard enough, which, on the surface, has no substance whatsoever. So I think that the judge is probably right for being put out the pasture, and I say that in a humorous way, but I think this is a display of absolute incompetence. It isn't to say that there may be valid reasons for plaintiffs to have the court look at, but this certainly was not one of them. And he is, therefore, the judge is demanding that the federal government and the state of Maryland prepare a supplemental environmental impact statement because his belief is that the impact, the original one, was approved by the federal government in 2014, doesn't, isn't adequate. And so, he's asking them to do that. That would take months, perhaps a year, to do. And basically, the Federal Transit Administration said, "Well, we did the environmental impact statement. Doing it a second time isn't going to produce any alternative results. The facts are what they are." I'm not going to go any further into the details on that because I could spend a long time, and my mayor, who I, whose opinion matters to me a lot, will really get ticked off at me, as well she should. But just to understand that undoubtedly, the Federal Transit Administration and the Maryland Transit Administration will take steps as soon as they can to appeal this ruling. And the hope is, is that more intelligent judges at the appeals level will reverse this decision. So, right now, it's bad news, but we can pray that it'll get turned around sometime in the not-too-distant future so that the Purple Line construction can proceed. So I will be happy to keep people informed as they wish on progress in that regard. Thank you.
Councilmember Crushy.
Thanks, ma'am. I think I saw the Department of Public Works Director here, and I wanted to just give her a shout-out, and also wanted to tell Ward 3 residents particularly, I think, are the ones who only apply here. But she did, has rolled out, I guess we'll call the pilot program of our hydrothermal, I don't know if I'm saying it right, Darryl, lines on Sherman Avenue, Hancock, and Fifth Avenue. We talked about yellow curb painting a few months ago, and this is the next generation of yellow curb painting where it's actually lines drawn on the street, sort of angling out a final spot near driveways, which will be a potential option for folks. So I encourage people to go down Fifth Avenue, Sherman, to check it out and provide feedback if you have a position on it, as opposed to yellow or pink curbs. The only other general comment I wanted to make is that this Friday is the start of Ramadan, the ninth month of the Islamic calendar, where Muslims like myself across the world will be fasting from sunrise to sunset. It's a month of introspection for Muslims around the world to refrain from not only eating or drinking, but also, often the hardest parts of our daily life that we sort of don't think about is impure thoughts, backstabbing, thinking negatively about others. It's an increased period of time of giving to charity, being involved in your community, and spending time with your family and breaking bread with your brothers and sisters. So, if you happen to run into a Muslim on the street, if you say Ramadan Mubarak to them, I think you'd do a great deed. And I personally will be rolling this out starting next week. To encourage Ward 3 residents who want to understand what Muslims do, or city residents, what they do during Ramadan is to do a weekly activity of giving to the community. And that could be cleaning up an area and parts of the city, but that is what Ramadan is about, and for those who are interested and would even like to fast with me one day, or half a day, I think it's a great reset that one could very much benefit from. So, that's why I'll have one minute.
Great. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. I would like to first thank everybody that helped organize Celebrate Tacoma this past Saturday. It was fantastic. The event continues to get bigger and bigger each year. I do appreciate all the volunteers that put in a lot of hard work. And I do want to mention Doris Duarte. She did get a ZELIO Award. Doris has worked really hard in our community, especially with Lunch and Learn every summer, and it was fantastic to see Doris get an award.
Love it. Love it, love it.
Now, this question I have for the acting city manager. When there is utility work in the city, do we have it as a policy that we put out messages on social media that lets residents know that this work is going on, even though it's already started?
It depends on the work. Generally, the utility companies are responsible for notifying residents. When there's a particularly large project or one that we know will have a big impact, we try to get the word out via News Alert on the webpage, and we push that through social media as well. We are certainly open to suggestions about when that information should get pushed via social media, and you can always send me requests and comments for that.
Okay, great. Thank you. Another announcement, this Saturday, May 27th, we will have the Essex House Community Day. This event is being sponsored by the landlord of the building, CPDC, and Jacquet Frazier is one of the organizers of the event, and Ms. Frazier's volunteers, because there are many people in the building that help her out. So this event runs from 2:00 to 6:00. It's an opportunity for the residents of Essex House to get together, have a party, but other people in the community can, of course, drop by. The event is held in the parking lot. It starts at 2:00. I encourage everybody to come out and get to know the neighbors that live in Essex House. Thank you, ma'am.
Great. Councilmember Mill, did you want to speak now?
Yeah. Oops, sorry. I pushed the wrong button again.
All right, it's all right.
The old technology always throws me. Councilmember Crushy, I'd happily join you in a day of fasting, so just let me know when. What's the best day? How do I stock up beforehand? I see Captain Collington in the office, in the audience, and I wanted to ask if the police department, the acting city manager, if we could have patrols occasionally on Colby Avenue, the dead-end circle on Colby Avenue. It's an area that used to have some elevated crime concerns a few years ago. I know the police spent some time, spending more time there, and I understand that's become an issue again, sort of late afternoon, 4:00, 7:00, sort of evening, evening window, as opposed to much later at night or during the day. I support Councilmember Schultz's statement that on the Purple Line, ideally, the state will appeal. And if he's interested in sending a letter of any description to the governor or the Attorney General recommending such, I'm happy to sign on. And then finally, in regards to the Washington McLaughlin School property that a resident, Mr. Ekle Kalsa, raised earlier in the meeting, I just wanted to indicate, you know, my view that it's, there's just not enough time for the city to consider an acquisition or a bid in the process. It's not actually land acquisition. It's a lien, it's the purchase of a lien, and so there may be a property acquisition in the future, which could be a better opportunity. That housing may be the best, affordable housing, may be the best use of the site, and there's a good chance that, we just don't know, but there's a good chance that some of the bidders on the lien could be parties that would ultimately have an interest in providing that affordable housing and are much better placed than the city to pursue that kind of work. But in any case, the lien is just a very early step, so even if an affordable housing provider or another developer chooses to acquire that lien, there's still plenty of time for the city staff, or indeed the county, to work with the purchaser of that lien to try to design a good future for the property. So I just wanted to express my views on that. And I think the residents have done a great job so far of trying to get information, of reaching out to parties, whether they're cohousing developers or other developers in the area or local nursery schools, daycares, to make sure people that might make really good neighbors are aware of the property and our local affordable housing providers. I know that the neighbors have held meetings with two residents in Tacoma Park who both work for some of the Montgomery Housing, affordable housing providers, and have made them aware of the property and some of the excitement that exists in, at least among Ward 2 and Ward 3 residents, in terms of a project going forward. So I'll stop there. Thank you.
Great, thanks. And Councilmember Kovar, you asked to speak again.
Yes, I apologize to my colleagues. I forgot to mention one other thing, and because I do see that our public works director is here. We talked recently about the art installation, also known as the Orange Cones on Tulip, that have been there about a year. And I've told everybody that it will be addressed in May, and so I feel like I know there was an emergency that they had to take care of recently, but we'd really like to get that done.
Great. All right, I just have a couple of announcements myself. I'm sorry I had to miss Celebrate Tacoma. Unfortunately, I had to go out of town for my other job, but I heard it was a wonderful event and want to thank particularly our rec committee. event and want to thank particularly our rec committee. I heard John Webster was outstanding, as well as all the members of our rec department and all the volunteers that made that day possible. And since Captain Collington is in the audience, I want to congratulate him on his Azalea Award with Megan Murphy for Tacoma Spirit.
Love it.
Couple of things. May 31st is the opening of the Crossroads Market on Ann Street, so 11:00 a.m. Please come out to that farmer's market. I will be there that day. Councilmember Schultz, will you be there on Wednesday?
Oh, gosh.
All right. Well, all right. Well, sorry to out you there. But hopefully, this weather will, the rain will stop, and we'll have a wonderful day. The other thing I want to talk about, actually speaking about the crossroads in Langley area, is that Councilmember Schultz and I are going to start doing lunches in the crossroads on Fridays. Starting on June 9th, we're going to have lunch at the Caribbean Palace with Delegate David Moon at noon, and residents are welcome to come. We will be publicizing this, and we'll be having lunches on Fridays in the crossroads twice a month. And hopefully, we have Delegate Moon, who is committed, Delegate Will Smith, County Council Member Tom Hucker.
Senator.
Oh, yeah. Sorry. Senator. Woo. Thank you. He may not come now.
This will also be an opportunity for other business owners in the immediate vicinity to drop by, imbibe with the rest of us, and have a chance to, you know, represent themselves to the mayor, to myself, and to whoever else is there. Right?
Yep. Absolutely. All right. So, that starts on June 9th at the Caribbean Palace, and stay tuned for more details. All right. And then, I think I'll just echo what Councilmember Mail said regarding the Washington McLaughlin property. I agree with the views he expressed, and I won't go on about that because I know our acting city manager has some of that in his report. So, and he has a very lengthy report this week. It's been very busy, so I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we've been doing a lot, and the report is long, so I'll try to get through it quickly. First off, follow-up to last council meeting. Councilmember Kovar had asked whether S.H.A. had plans to install a traffic signal at the intersection of Tulip and Carroll, where it is confusing for vehicles approaching Carroll from Tulip, and they're turning on to Carroll. We have confirmation from S.H.A. that that is going to be happening in the near future. We were told that it would happen soon, although we've been given no more specific information than that. Councilmember Kovar also inquired about the status of a potential crosswalk going in at Philadelphia and Park. Staff actually requested funding for that project as part of last year's Safe Routes to Schools grant application. We were not awarded sufficient funds for all the projects that we requested and ended up combining what we were awarded to the previous year's allocation to complete Lincoln Avenue's sidewalk construction. However, we have gone out for additional funds this year and included Park in Philadelphia again in this year's request for Safe Routes to School funds. If awarded the funds, which I think we have a good chance of getting them, we'll apply those funds towards that project, and we might even have a way to fund it whether or not we get those grant funds. The mayor asked last week that we make sure that the new S.H.A. administrator was aware of the progress being made on the New Hampshire Avenue Bike Ways Plan. Information was provided by the consultant about that plan last week. We have indeed passed along the presentation on the 30% design and requested support from them moving forward. We're also preparing an application for the fiscal year 18 Maryland Bike Ways Grant, which, if awarded, could be another source of funds to continue work on the New Hampshire Bike Way project.
How much is the grant?
I'm not sure of the total amount of the grant. Piney Branch and Philadelphia Signal Work. Last week's report noted that S.H.A. would be working on the pedestrian signals, and they hoped to get to it last week or this week, but because of inclement weather, we've been told that the project was postponed to May 31st. So, I just wanted folks to know that in case they were wondering why. That work had not yet been done. To speak to the Washington McLaughlin and John Evans Andrews property, as the mayor just mentioned, we understand that with the recent tax sale notice on the Washington McLaughlin property and the recent closure, or announcement of the closure of J&amp;A, there's a lot of speculation and anxiety within the community, rightfully so, about the future of these properties. I want people to know that staff has been in regular contact with the county, with MCPS and representatives of J&amp;A about the properties, and will continue to stay in touch with them to gather information, which we'll share with council and residents as it becomes available. Regarding the Washington McLaughlin property, while the city will be keeping close tabs on the outcome of the sale, given the complexities of a tax sale and the length of time that it can take to actually establish ownership, it's too soon for us now to know what the range of possibilities for the future of the property are. We put out a news item on the tax sale process, which is available on the city's website, that explains in more detail the process and the lengthy, in terms of time, the lengthy steps involved. Regarding John Evans Andrews, we understand that MCPS has indicated that it could be a potential site for a new elementary school. At this time, given the need for an elementary school in the area, they're investigating the site's potential and capacity, along with a few other sites in the area. Similar to the Washington McLaughlin property, the J&amp;A site is not currently for sale, although they have indicated that they've sought assistance from a real estate professional to determine what they can do with the property. Staff, and I believe a council member or two, will be joining staff to meet with a representative of John Evans Andrews and their real estate professional that they've brought on board tomorrow morning to learn more about where things stand. So, we should have more information after tomorrow. We do know that they have, they have not officially done anything with the property other than announce that they would be closing the school at the end of this academic year. June 3rd is Household Hazardous Waste Disposal Day, so if you have household hazardous waste, you can drop it off for free at Public Works between 10:00 and 2:00 p.m. Residents can also bring small electronic equipment and computer components for drop-off for electronics recycling, which we do at Public Works as well. We're launching a new initiative, very much in line with Tacoma Park values. It's called the Car Free Challenge. The city is launching a challenge that's open to everyone in the community, and we're going to be having an organizational competition ourselves. It'll last about five months, and the goal is to form new habits around using your car less and alternative transportation like biking, walking, ride shares, or public transportation more. There is a website that you can go to register and find out more information. It's carfreetkpk.com. So, I encourage everyone who's listening to visit the website and register and see what you can do to use your car less. There is currently ongoing sidewalk work on Poplar, and the work, when it commenced, it was determined that the road needed to be closed to through traffic in order to get the work completed. As a result, there's going to be a detour in place while the crews are working. That goes from New Hampshire to Sligo Mill, down Orchard to Fourth, and back onto Poplar. This work should take about five days, but will be dependent on the weather. We think it should be done by the beginning of next week. As it's heating up, not necessarily in this auditorium, the mosquito season is once again upon us. Got my first mosquito bite last weekend, and I was unhappy about it. Zika remains a serious concern in the United States, in parts of the United States, as well as areas south of the U.S. We are going to be getting out information to residents through the newsletter, our website, and social media. I believe there is something that's going to be included in the June newsletter. And residents are reminded to do their part by checking around their homes after rain and dumping out anything that has standing water where mosquitoes wave eggs. The Housing and Economic Development Strategic Plan work continues. Stakeholder interviews are currently underway, and the analysis of various data resources is being completed. On Monday, an online survey was launched, and we encouraged council and residents to take a moment to complete the survey. A link is available in the city manager notes, which will be posted online tomorrow and on the city's website.
Can I ask a question about that? One of the other issues that's come up before, and I don't know how it's been resolved, was whether in addition to the survey, there would be an opportunity for people to comment publicly in a public meeting. Do you know if there's been any discussion of that?
I'm not sure if there's been discussion about a formal way to do that, other than at a public, at a council meeting when information is being shared with you all during the public comment period, but I can look into that.
Yeah, and I think it would be helpful to have at least one opportunity where the public could give their perspective to the contractor.
Okay. The third meeting in the community conversations with Montgomery College and Tacoma Park is scheduled for June 6th. This meeting will take place at the college, beginning at 7:30, and it'll last until 9:30, not 9:03, as it says in here. That's a typo. Sorry about that. The meeting's going to be held in the Science North Building, room 100. And anybody, whether you've been to the previous two meetings or not, is welcome to attend and encouraged to attend. The deadline for submissions of letters of interest for a potential partner for the redevelopment of the rec center was on Monday. We received a total of five submissions, which we'll be reviewing soon. We'll be providing additional information to council as soon as it's available. There's additional information on that project on the city's website as well. First-time homebuyer efforts. The city has continued its commitment to meeting the housing needs of its residents with this year's first installment of the first-time homebuyer class. Sponsored by the Latino Economic Development Center and the Housing and Community Development Department, participants were given an industry insider's perspective on understanding and navigating the home-buying process. We had a great turnout. There were actually 21 people, potential homebuyers, who attended the six-hour session, which was on a Saturday, I believe, three or four weeks ago now. I wanted to echo kudos to staff and all the volunteers across the city, in particular recreation staff, for all of their great work in making Celebrate Tacoma a great success. I was there with my family in tow for about an hour and a half, and if my four-year-old hadn't been acting up, I would have stayed for even longer. I've included in the city manager notes a picture of one of the things that I thought was the coolest at Celebrate Tacoma. It was about a 12-foot-long, about five-foot-tall mural that was black and white, and it was completely colored in by people who were attending the festival. We had a great time and can't wait for it next year.
So, what are we doing with the mural?
I asked the same question. Enjoy this picture because we still have the mural, but we're saving it for future years. And I actually learned that the materials that were used, you're able to wipe right off, so we can use it again in future years. But we did get lots of good pictures of it, I understand. We have prepared the RFP for a county lobbyist, and it's still in the city attorney's office. We're awaiting their review and feedback. Once we receive it, we'll finalize and post it ASAP. We're currently advertising for an IT manager, sanitation driver, a public works equipment operator, and a planning intern, and we still expect that. An announcement for a new police chief is still several weeks away, and that's all I have.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for your report. The Independence Day Committee was curious about the Carroll Avenue Bridge to see whether that detour was going to be over by July 4th of this year.
I can look into it. I don't have any additional information at this time.
Thank you. And one other thing, I know that it's outside of city limits, but that they're also going to be replacing the pedestrian bridge, or putting in a new pedestrian bridge on Piney Branch Road at Sligo Creek Parkway. And their flyer indicated that the detour route is Easton Allen Road off of Piney Branch Road. That doesn't work. They're talking about Philadelphia Avenue, so they may want to update their flyer.
Okay. I will look into that as well.
Councilmember Kovar? Light sign. Did you have something else to say? Okay. Great. All right. Thank you to the city, the acting city manager for that report. We will move on now to our voting session. Our first voting item is a resolution renaming Columbus Day as Indigenous Peoples' Day. I just want to thank again everyone who came this evening. For those of you who requested this, glad we got it in early enough this year in time. And I know Councilmember Kovar did request a slight change. For the council members, it's in your folder. Councilmember Kovar requested that in our therefore clause, that it was more action-oriented. So, actually, for those people who are sitting here tonight and are watching us, I'll just quickly read the resolution. This is recognizing the second Monday in October as Indigenous Peoples' Day in Tacoma Park, whereas Columbus Day is observed as a federal holiday on the second Monday in October, and whereas the day recognizes the October 12, 1492 landing of Christopher Columbus on island in the Caribbean, marking the Europeans' first contact with the New World. And whereas this contact began centuries of settlement on lands already occupied by native peoples of the Americas and exploitation of the New World's seamless, endless resources. And whereas Indigenous Americans experienced conquest, enslavement, displacement, and disease, which disseminated the population. And whereas Native people who were removed from this area include, and I apologize for some of the pronunciation, the Pascataway, the Anacostat, the Pamunkin, the Manapatin, the Nangamik, and the Tahukin. And whereas the state of Vermont and a growing number of cities and towns in the United States have recognized the second Monday of October as Indigenous Peoples' Day, reimagining Columbus Day as an opportunity to celebrate Indigenous heritage and resiliency. And whereas although it is a federal holiday, Columbus Day is not a holiday for the City of Tacoma Park employees, and city government functions and meetings continue on their usual schedule. And whereas recognizing the second Monday in October as Indigenous Peoples' Day will serve as a reminder to reflect on the Native people who are here before us and their descendants. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Tacoma Park, Maryland, that the city will recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day on the second Monday in October of each year to acknowledge and celebrate the culture and sacrifice of the first peoples of this land. All right? Would someone like to move this resolution?
Someone.
Oh, did you have a question before?
I wanted to make a.
Yeah, I'd like to make it.
Oh, okay. Do you want, before it moved? Okay.
Well, then, it's just easy to.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah.
The second whereas states.
The second whereas states the day recognizes the October 2012. I'd rather say the federal government recognizes the October.
Okay.
If we could just replace day with federal government.
Yep. Any other amendments before I ask for it to be moved? Okay. So, I think I had Councilmember Kreschke moved it, with the second from Councilmember Smith. Any other changes or questions or comments?
I'd just like to make a quick comment there, if that's okay. First of all, you know, in a serious and important topping, topic like this, maybe it's because I'm the new guy on the council, I always find humor in certain things. In between this beautifully-written resolution is the final, second-to-last whereas clause, reminding city staff that they still have to show up on Monday, Columbus Day, that you're not going to get the day off. You best be at work. That's great. So, I just wanted to comment on this. I want to thank the mayor and everybody who was involved in putting this idea forward, and also for those of you who are here, because it's so fitting that this is happening the week of what Arthur David Olson talked about in the news out of New Orleans. And if you haven't seen or read Mitch Landrieu's speech regarding the removal of Confederate statues and regarding the history of it, but also articulating why we need to not revere that, we can still remember it, but we can't revere it in the manner that we do. I think everybody, it's must, must, must-see TV, must-read speech, whatever you want to call it. I feel really strongly about this, and I do for the many reasons that were articulated by the folks here. Columbus Day, to me, has always been, I grew up most of my later adulthood, childhood on Long Island, New York, around a lot of Italian people who love their Italian heritage and who love Christopher Columbus, because he represents this person in their history, an explorer who found this new world. And I get that. I get that. But what, I think what we don't, we lose sight of is that we're honoring the first white man who happened to touch this new world. We just forget that there was already people who had found this prize. It was their home, and those are the Indigenous people. And a reflection of that, and I appreciate, I forget your name, ma'am, that you gave a sh- shout out to one of the most magical places on the planet, which is the Black Hills of South Dakota. And you look at the untouched parts of this country where there are still remnants of, of those Indigenous folks. And you know, you think about the holidays we celebrate. We celebrate Martin Luther King Jr., I think, in terms of people. There's no question that man deserves celebration. And George Washington being the founder of our country, might, the jury's still out on other things, but still. But then you have Columbus, who I just doesn't, don't think fits the mold. And, and it goes to that Mitch Landrieu speech specifically, where he says, there's a difference between remembrance of history and reverence of history. And I think what Arthur David Holson said tonight, I think, we should look at these street signs and immediately move on them and get involved with the Commemoration Commission, because I think this is what reflects our community. So I appreciate all, all the folks who came out today. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith? Sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Koreshi took most of the things I was going to say, including the speech made by the mayor of New Orleans. I was born in Seattle. I, I was raised on the West Coast. I've been to Native lands many times in my life. It is appalling how we have allowed these people that are the heart of America to, to live in these conditions. They are, the treaties that we signed, they're supposed to be their own nation-states. But we, as Americans, as the United States of American, of America, have not give them the resources and the money that they are supposed to get based on these treaties to maintain their lands. And we have taken the minerals, the rights, and all the things that are of value from these people. So it's heartbreaking to see that it has taken so long for Americans to wake up and start recognizing the people that made this, the foundation of what we call America. I mean, Christopher Columbus was just one guy that, you know, was lost. And all of a sudden, now we make him this American hero. That's the fascinating thing about history in this country. A group of people can lose a war, and now they are revered, the South and the Confederacy. Christopher Columbus, his contribution was, I would say, minor in what we consider American history, but we have put him on this pedestal that I do not think is representative of the initial values of this country. The Declaration of Independence, and later on, the Constitution. So it's great that Tacoma Park is taking the lead on this. I think it's just about time. Some things are just happening in, in this country. There's, there's almost like this awakening, you know, and maybe it started with Ferguson, but it's moved throughout this country. And what is happening in parts of Virginia trying to get rid of Confederate monuments is very important, you know? I mean, these things are, are, these people, we should remember them in history, but they should not take all the air out the room that they have done in America. They are part of American history, not all of American history. And I think this is just another step that I hope other parts of this country will adopt and, and change Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day. Thank you.
Councilmember Kovar?
Thank you. I wanted to mention first of all that the reason for the change in the language was, and this is not a, again, not a criticism, but just an observation, the initial resolution essentially just said, this day will be designated as Indigenous Peoples' Day. And in talking to the mayor, I mentioned that I thought it ought to be structured so that we could actually take steps to recognize it. Exactly what those steps will be remains to be seen, maybe some of the local schools could be involved, but just to make it, as she said, a more active thing, struck me as appropriate. I do want to also say jurisdictions that take actions like this, or people who request changes of this kind, sometimes they get derided as political correctness. And I just want to be really clear about, this is a way overdue expression of respect. This is not some phony political correctness thing. I'm not even sure what that's supposed to mean, but this is a deep expression of respect and honor for people who have been mistreated for centuries. And I don't think that, one of my colleagues mentioned, you know, remembering as opposed to having reverence for previous things that happened. So, history happened, and we can't say that it didn't happen, but I think it's important to look back. And, you know, some of us may have responsibilities for it, you know? In, in my case, if your family came to New England in the early 1600s, you, your forebears contributed to that. And so I think it's vitally important that this is recognized and that we understand the history and not allow people to say, oh, you're just doing something because it sounds good. This is an actual important step for us to be taking. So I thank the mayor and the rest of my colleagues for helping move us in that direction. Thanks.
Great. All right. Councilmember Mail?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank my colleague, Councilmember Kovar, agreeing with my colleague's remarks. In your suggestion of recognizing Indigenous Peoples' Day and trying to make it an active thing, there's a very marked difference between the way, it appears that this administration is going to prioritize, or frankly, deprioritize, working with both recognized tribes and, and unrecognized tribes and Hawaiian people versus the last administration. And my guess is that by October, those differences are even more stark, from the budget to the attention that the, the federal government, the White House, gives to issues that are important to tribes. And so one of the things we could potentially do on or before October is to just try to pay attention, acknowledge that, encourage our federal representatives to, to step up where the administration is not. Thank you.
Great. And I'm, I think it's fitting that we let the final words actually be from a Native American. A Native American chief once said, "A nation that does not reconcile with its past risks its future." And so with that, I'd like to ask my colleagues, all those in favor of this resolution, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? No, it passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Love it.
And I'll tell those folks who came tonight in support of this, we, we do not mind if you get up and leave now. We understand. We like if you can stay, but we also understand it's getting late. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right.
Love it, love it, love it.
All right, now we have a first reading ordinance authorizing FY 2017 Budget Amendment Number Three. I don't know if the acting city manager has anything to say to this?
Sure. I'll explain what it includes. It's a pretty weighty budget amendment. It's mostly urine cleanup stuff. The third budget amendment, this is the third budget amendment this year, and it reflects a net reduction in both the general fund and special revenue expenditures, largely accounting for two major projects that are being put off, that were originally budgeted for this year, both the expenditures and the revenues that are being put off until next year for various reasons. The Ethan Allen Gateway, Gateway Project and the Flower Avenue Green Street Project. Expenditures that were not originally included in the fiscal year 17 budget that are included in this budget amendment include $10,000 for, a $10,000 increase to the human resources recruiting line related to the initial recruitment for the police chief position. $15,000 that we spent to settle the winding hillway matter. $20,590,000 additional dollar, I'm, no, sorry, $20,590. Additional was needed to complete the community center security door work that was done. An additional $12,834 was needed to complete the, the equipment purchase of pressure washing equipment in the, the Public Works Department. About $17,000 extra was needed to replace HVAC rooftop units, number seven and eight, which is why it's chilly in here now. We had originally budgeted for one of those, and when the contractors went on the roof to do the work, they, they told us we actually needed to replace two. 25 percent, the city's 25 percent match related to the Colby Park Design and Construction, which is about $22,000 that was unbudgeted in the current fiscal year. 25 percent match for completion of the dog park, which is about $52,000. A replacement of trucks 215, 216, and 245 in Public Works Fleet, which was an overall increase of 67,450 for the first two trucks I mentioned, which were included in the budget originally, but they were more expensive than was budgeted for. And then truck 245 was budgeted to be replaced next year, and we needed to, we ended up needing to replace it this year. Of these expenditures, council had already authorized all but the pressure washing equipment and the smart energy light fixtures, and that's largely because those were bought in pieces. When council, we, we seek authorization from council for purchases, it's, it's, first, it's for items or services that were over $10,000. None of the individual components of those themselves were $10,000, but in the end, they added up to over $10,000. And that's one of the reasons why they are included in this budget amendment. So again, there's a net reduction, both the general fund and special revenue funds, and the net reduction is largely because of the huge dollar amounts for the two major capital projects.
Councilmember Smith, you have a question?
Yes. I would just ask you to look at the total for the IT server room renovation, make sure that math is right. The, the total you have is 151, 320. If you add the 85 plus the 66, 230. It should be.
Should be 151, 230 rather than.
Okay. I will make sure that that is corrected in the amendment.
Right. Should be 151, 230.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Glad I could help.
Councilmember Mail?
Yeah, just a few general comments. The, having a complicated budget amendment like this, I, I recognize the need for it. I think ideally, we'd have something like this, we'd get it as a work session, like a week in advance, just letting us know, this whole pile of stuff is coming your way, and then move forward. Not that it would change, I think, the outcome, but given the complexity of what the city is giving us, just a little bit more of an advanced look at it would be helpful. Noting the change in the door security system appears to just be a matter of sort of counting the doors that have security systems and getting that wrong by tens of thousands of dollars. Just noting that, we probably could do a better job on, on pricing.
I can certainly appreciate that.
Those things out. And then HVACs have come up. I hear about them a lot in the time on council. We seem to go through lots of HVAC units, and it gets hotter and colder in here, and presumably in all of your offices, and down in the police department as well, as a result. But just given how often we replace that equipment, and how many advances there have been in energy efficient technology, you know, I'd really urge the city to sort of think ahead, knowing that we're going to have $100,000 worth of HVAC replacements over the next 10 years, to think about what's the most long-lasting equipment that we can get. It also is, you know, going to have significant energy savings. And I know the Public Works Director, that's already something we've heard about in past rounds. But I just, you know, a lot of equipments, once it's in, it's in forever, and HVACs clearly are not in that category, at least the ones we've been using. So, trying to do the best we can in terms of optimizing cost and, and energy use would be a good thing. Thank you.
Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of comments. First of all, the, the truck that we ended up having to buy a year ahead of time, it makes me feel good that we do this equipment reserve the way that we do, so that we had saved almost enough money, and we actually had some extra money in there from other items, so that having the reserve seems to work good. Are, are things like the air conditioner included in equipment reserve?
Yes, they are.
Okay. And then I had a question about, you know, there were two items here where things were purchased in components that were under $10,000, but as a whole, they have, over $10,000, they have to have approval. Is the, I find that worrisome, if we know that we're going to have to buy all those components in the beginning, that it wouldn't come before the council, before the fact, instead of after the fact? I just wondered if you could speak to that?
I agree. And I think for both of these items, and the Public Works Director can correct me if I'm wrong, these were budgeted to be purchased over years, and we didn't end up purchasing things, certain things related to the pressure washing equipment, I know for sure, last year that we ended up buying this year, and the total amount of that stuff was, was not expected to exceed $10,000 per year when we were purchasing them, and they were budgeted for. With regard to the light fixtures, I'm not sure if, if Ms. Braithwaite can speak to how that happened, but it may have had to do with some of the grant money that we received this year.
I think it's, it's largely related to getting light notice from the Maryland Energy Administration about grant funds. They had some difficulties in staffing their office. So, we had had some funds established for, for light fixtures, so we started to purchase, and then we found we had a grant, so we continued to purchase others. I think in the future, I've talked to staff about coming up with a better way to do this, so we kind of sort of slow down and, and take a look overall. I think they were trying to do piecemeal what they could at the time with the funds they thought, and then as we got more funds, they just continued to do piecemeal work. And so we ended up with, with expenditures over $10,000 in total, but hadn't seen it coming until the end.
I think, you know, each situation is different, but if it's something where, like if it's a sprayer equipment, if you're going to need all the components before you have the job done, then it seems like something that should come before the council.
Yeah, I agree.
Thank you.
And the, part of the reason they're included in the budget amendment, is, part of it is a mea culpa, to make sure you are aware that we did purchase these things.
Thank you.
All right. Would someone like to move the ordinance? Councilmember Schultz? Councilmember Mail, second. Any other questions or comments? All right. All those in favor of the adopting the fiscal year 2017 Budget Amendment Number Three, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Councilmember Mail, did you?
No.
Oh, okay. You're jumping ahead. All right.
Turn on my mic so that you can hear me when I said aye.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Next, we have a consent agenda. Would someone like to move the consent agenda?
Someone.
Councilmember Smith moves. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Mail. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye. Oh, we, we actually have some single reading ordinances. I think the, we need to call a roll on this one. Thank you.
Mayor Stewart?
Aye.
Councilmember Kovar?
Aye.
Councilmember Mail?
Aye.
Councilmember Koreshi?
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
Okay, great. That passes. All right. Next, we have a work session on the, an update on the Folk Festival. Thank you for coming this evening.
Pleasure. I'm Robin Stern, and I'm one of the chairs of the festival for this year. My co-chair, Sarah Lanning, couldn't be here tonight because she is, has the nerve to be on her way to France. So, our planning is underway for September 10th, 2017, and some of the goals are reviving and sustaining the festival and increasing attendance. We just wanted you to know that the top positions of the co-chairs, neither one of us are actually from this community, but we felt that it's such an important event, that we both wanted to be involved, and when they heard what both of our backgrounds were, they, they considered us for the job. So, we are actually looking at that and hoping to find people within the community to step up after we are done. And if that is not. up after we are done, and if that is not possible, then we are looking into the possibility of writing a grant to pay a part-time position to sustain the festival, mostly because we just feel that the people that are running it should be from the community. Let's see. So what we are working on right now is the infrastructure, especially improving and centralizing documentation and record-keeping. An online archive of documents has been created so that nothing is lost. In addition, the organization now has a virtual address for business. This entire year has been designated the year of the 40th anniversary, beginning at the 2017 festival and culminating at the 2018 festival. In order to highlight the anniversary and give a more modern feel, we commissioned a local graphic designer, and now we have a brand-new logo, which I will actually hand The logo also includes a tagline celebrating 40 years of community. The logo has already been put into use on the website, business cards and flyers, and stationery is also in the plan. Two grant proposals have been submitted, and we'd like to thank the city for approving our proposal, and the support of the city is vital for continued efforts of the planning committee. The other proposal was submitted to Tacoma Foundation, and we should be learning about that probably within the next two weeks. We've already had one small community fundraiser, and the committee is looking into the feasibility of doing some more, mostly to increase the funds that would be distributed back out into the community, and also to do some more publicity. One of the things that they were looking at is doing pre-event concerts, one in each ward. So I would assume that once that is decided by the committee members, that you'll be hearing from someone soon. To date, the permit for the use of Tacoma Park Middle School was approved. The request for performers went out in the mail and is now closed. Approximately 250 applications were received for six stages. The requests for crafters and food vendors are now out, and requests for community tables will be going out within the next few weeks. Calls for additional volunteers, individual and groups for event day have begun, and businesses are now being approached for sponsorship. As part of the celebration of the community, some special items are being planned. Nancy Abbott Young is coordinating a historical display for the festival, and we are looking into gaining the rights to a piece of artwork depicting the festival and reproducing it as a poster. We have also just commissioned Bill Brown to work on the T-shirt design, and the designed process should be completed by mid-June. There has been renewed interest in having a presence at other community events, such as other festivals and special events, and making the festival information widespread. The publicity chair is in the process of organizing a forum so that Sarah and I can coordinate those efforts and make sure that flyers are available to those supporting the festival. It's been discussed that outreach to more cultural groups should be done. PR materials will be translated into Spanish and distributed and posted amongst the community. The radio station will also be highlighting performers regularly leading up to the festival. Lastly, after doing a walk-through of the school property, comparing it to previous layouts and getting feedback from community chairs, we are looking at improving the foot traffic to the vendors, giving them more interaction with the community members. We do have, we have identified one need, that we could use some long-term storage. A lot of the festival supplies are stored in people's basements, and they're all over the place, so it's been difficult for us to be able to inventory what's where, so we're looking into the possibility of getting some sort of a storage space someplace, and we are open to suggestions if anybody has one. So we'd like to thank you again for the city's support, and our next planning meeting will be sometime in June, and we'd be happy to do another update as desired.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stern, for coming this evening and for stepping up. I did not realize you didn't live in Tacoma Park.
I would desperately like to live here.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I don't know if any of my colleagues have any questions? Councilmember Schultz?
Yeah, you mentioned, and thank you for coming to the rescue of Tacoma Park. I mean, seriously, that's really greatly appreciated. You are going to recommend or are recommending that the city, or somehow or another, be set up so that the chair or co-chair of the festival be paid, or receive a stipend? Is that what I heard you say?
Well, if we can't find someone that will continue as a volunteer within the community, it's something that Sarah and I are looking at, is to look for grant funds from somewhere. It can be from the city, it may not have to be from the city. She and I are both well-versed in preparing grant proposals, so we'll be looking at all sorts of sources.
Do you have a feeling of the magnitude of that, of what that might amount to?
Monetarily?
Yeah, monetarily.
We actually haven't discussed it. We're thinking that a half-time position would probably be sufficient. Throughout the year, it's not as many hours, but the last few months going into the festival is pretty extensive, and it's almost full-time, which is a lot to ask for one person to do, especially if they're working full-time.
Yeah, because we don't want to have another hiatus...
Oh, no.
...in the festival. And if, this, I realize yours is something that you're looking into, but it is an interesting idea, and I think some of us would like to learn more about your thinking about the merits, pros and cons of trying to do that so that the festival might be at less risk of delay or whatever problems that might arise.
See, I know that Sarah is actually really documenting the time that we've been spending, so we're going to be taking a look at that to determine exactly how many hours it is, and then we'll be able to give you a better figure.
Okay, good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great, any other questions or comments? No, I think that's it for this evening. Thank you again very much for everything you're doing.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, our next item is a discussion of city traffic calming practices and recent projects. I think our Director of Public Works will be joining us, and I want to thank her as well as our Safe Roadways Committee, and again apologize that we were going to take this up, I can't remember, a month or so ago, and...
April 26.
But our council meeting ran a little long that night, so we're glad to reschedule it for this evening.
Yep, well, just briefly again, I'd like to thank the Safe Roadways Committee for the presentation they provided to the council on this item. I think in addition to the agenda cover sheet, I just wanted to touch on sort of three areas. One, sort of the little background and history, and then also kind of the process for how things work now related to traffic calming requests, and then lastly, you know, projects that we've undertaken in the last five years to sort of give you a flavor of what we're dealing with now. In terms of the history, it was sort of surprising to me to realize our regulations have been in place for over 20 years. They were established in 1996, so it's been a process that's been in place and utilized quite heavily over that timeframe. It was revised in 2003, and that revision was basically to get at this issue of previously speed humps were all that was referenced in the regulations. So in 2003, that was expanded to include other traffic calming measures, and there was some definition, which I mentioned in the cover sheet, that was added to the regulation defining traffic calming devices as signs, pavement-marking speed humps, raised walkways, flat-top speed humps or speed tables, or other physical devices placed or installed on the highway. So there was an effort at that time to reflect the reality that traffic calming can be implemented in a broader number of ways in addition to speed humps, though I will agree that for many, many years, that seemed to be the choice de jour of neighborhoods as they were looking at dealing with traffic issues in their neighborhood. The ordinance itself last went through a revision in 2011, and at that time, what we did was add language that tried to clarify and specify best practices related to the placement of speed humps, because previously our ordinance was sort of kind of missing any distinction, so we added language related to distance between speed humps that was more appropriate for our-size streets, issues of slopes, and what was not appropriate for speed humps on slopes, and also, you know, sections of roadways where it wouldn't be appropriate in terms of cul-de-sacs and whatnot. So that was changed in 2011. In terms of the process itself, the city's traffic calming process is entirely a resident-driven process at its initiation. So residents are required to circulate a petition among the affected neighbors, and when two-thirds of the affected neighbors sign on to a petition, it goes to the city clerk and is scheduled for a public hearing. The definition of that affected residence is basically the block where the speed hump, or this, excuse me, the traffic calming measure is considered, as well as the adjacent block of the same street. The regulations do not require cross-streets to be involved in that petition process, with the exception of a cross-street, kind of like a cul-de-sac or a dead end, where the street where the traffic calming measure is being considered is the only way in or out for that particular block. So if you have a little cul-de-sac off that street, they have to be included in the petition process, but otherwise, the regulations just require the existing block and the adjacent blocks of the same streets to be included. Once that petition is received, the city clerk's office reviews it, makes sure it meets the two-thirds signature threshold, and then it's scheduled for a public hearing. The city clerk's office notifies the affected residents of that public hearing, and then, of course, that takes place in front of the council. Any decision on that traffic calming measure goes through after the public hearing process, generally a work session, and then a two-reading ordinance before it's implemented. And that's basically the process that exists and how it functions today. In terms of recent projects, I'd say over the past five years or so, we've had about four traffic calming requests that have come before the council and been authorized. Three of those four required specific engineering design. We brought in traffic engineers to help us develop that and work with the community. One was done in-house. And I took a look at the wards where those took place, and again, this is just a snapshot of the past five years, but it was Ward 1, Ward 4, Ward 5, Ward 6. The Ward 1 traffic calming request was a Boston Avenue request, and theirs was very specific to a neighborhood park. That was Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Park, and the need to provide traffic calming for kids and parents and others coming to and from the park. So in that case, we did a bump-out and a mid-block crossing with the, and we relocated a speed hump and added a speed hump. So that was a mix of a number of different measures. Probably the bigger project that we undertook was the Ritchie Avenue traffic calming, which was really generated by things outside the city related to the Parkview and Park Valley traffic restrictions. And in that case, I think, and Councilmember Siemens may recollect, we had a great number of community meetings. We brought in an engineering firm, and it was really a street-wide overall design process, which included traffic circle at Oswego and Ritchie, as well as four traffic bump-outs on one side of Ritchie. And in that process, four speed humps were added, but two speed humps on a steeply-sloped section of Ritchie Avenue were removed at the community's request. So it really was a process that was iterative and really built on community comment and really was at the end result. I don't know if everyone was pleased, but it really was one that input a lot of community comments in the process. We did a small project on Garland Avenue in Ward 5 that was, basically, we did two bump-outs on a street that already had speed humps, and in those cases, we actually created bio-retention facilities related to those bump-outs. Was also something we did on Ritchie Avenue, where the traffic circle itself and the changes in the curb around the traffic circle incorporated into stormwater treatment facilities. So it is something that we try to do as we're moving through these programs, when we're either eliminating pavement to try to take a look at the stormwater and drainage impacts and meet our other needs through these projects. And lastly, Ward 6 in Erskine Street, that was a process that was originally started related to a sidewalk request, and then evolved into residents saying, jeez, if you're going to have a sidewalk, you need to have traffic calming. So there was an engineering firm brought in that had worked on the sidewalks, that took a look at that section of roadway. It turns out, based on previous traffic counts that we did, it's one of the heavily, more heavily-traveled streets in the city, Erskine Street, which was a surprise to some, but really gets quite a bit of cut-through traffic from New Hampshire to Rigs Road. And in that case, we installed a sidewalk, we did some intersection narrowing, and we adjusted the location and added one speed hump. So in those past cases, you see a pretty good example of a real mix of measures based on what's on the ground, what the issues are, and how best to try to reach consensus among the community. It's slightly different than our sidewalk process, where in the sidewalk process, we have a vote of the neighbors themselves. The traffic calming process does not include that type of vote. Basically, the initial community input is through the petition process, and then it comes to the council through the public hearing, and then eventually the ordinance process to get established, and then, of course, you all establish the funding levels that either, you know, determine when that project can go ahead. So that's basically all I had prepared to talk about. One of the things I wanted to add was, in some of the recommendations by the Safe Roadways Committee on a staff level at the Public Works Department, we absolutely support the use of the Montgomery Standard as the sole speed hump model. We would welcome that if the council wants to take that on. The city standard speed hump evolved over time and was sort of unique to Tacoma Park. It isn't based on sound engineering design, I would say. It's basically based on trying to reduce speed of cars traveling and make an impactful speed hump. There's far more engineering analysis and design work that have been done around the speed hump standard that Montgomery County currently uses, as do many jurisdictions all over the country. And so we're far more comfortable with advocating for that as the standard speed hump. That said, we've all been in meetings where community members specifically request one type of speed hump over another, so it is one of those things that, it didn't get created by us. It basically got created by a combination of factors coming together and residents really pushing us for the most extreme speed hump that could be in existence and still pass mustard with cars. So we definitely support the Safe Roadways recommendation that we use only one type of speed hump standard, one that has gone through the full engineering design and one that is replicable around the country, for any number of reasons. In addition to the fact that it's easier to install, it's basically, you know when you've got it, and so we would have consistency throughout the city if that became our speed hump of choice. We also agree and would like to support the use of more traffic analysis for requests that come through. Currently, the community does not have to show speed or volume issues related to their traffic calming requests. We now have internally, within the police department, the ability to provide those types of information, and we hadn't had that before, where they can do traffic counts, and they can do volume counts, and they can determine the type and number of cars that are coming through a neighborhood. So we would very much welcome that being integrated in the process so that we actually get some traffic analysis, real-world traffic analysis, to determine speeds and volumes. Now, of course, that would raise the issue of, okay, if you show that no cars are going over 25 miles an hour, does that mean the issue's dead or not? I think really that goes back to the individual nature of these types of requests, and in some neighborhoods, a car traveling at 25 miles an hour down a street, even though it's the traffic, it's the speed limit, is not appropriate for the conditions of that road based on parking, based on children, based on crosswalks. So there are some streets where, you know, we would want to take that into account. And lastly, you know, we continue to advocate use of means other than speed humps to calm traffic. It's definitely been an interest of ours on the staff level and the planning department, as well as the Public Works Department over years, and we've always advocated for traffic calming measures beyond speed humps. Speed hump is an easy go-to, but it doesn't always accomplish what you're actually trying to accomplish. So we would recommend and definitely support Safe Roadways comments that we need to use the full catalog of available traffic calming measures and not just speed humps as the de facto go-to.
Lights on. All right, I'll go first to Councilmember Kreshi.
Thanks, Mayor. I actually have a question about the actual process that you just described, because this came up. You know, in Ward 3, where Kansas Lane comes down and comes to Cockrell, that community, particularly... particularly the residents who live at the bottom of the hill, Len and his wife, there's pillars up there now. There's concern in the winter that the cars skid down and, and collide with their home. So that's technically an adjacent street on the sign where you'd want to make it one way, let's say, starting in the time of the winter. Would the petition have to include residents on Cockrell and Kansas Lane, or one or the other? Do you know?
I think the way it's written out, and I think we've already received one, and Jess Carpenter would be the better source of this than I know. I've communicated with her about that on a number of occasions. If it's making Kansas Avenue one way, currently Kansas Avenue residents in that block and the adjacent block would be the only people that would be involved in the petition process. Because Cockrell Avenue isn't the only ingress and egress, I mean, Kansas Avenue doesn't provide a sole ingress and egress to Cockrell Avenue, it would not necessarily be included in that petition process. It isn't to say that residents can't include streets and blocks beyond, you know, their own for these requests, to try to reflect the interest in the neighborhood, and we always advocate for that. But technically, the way the regulations are currently defined, it would not be required to, to go outside of Kansas Lane in this case for a petition.
The only reason I ask is because some in the neighborhood are aware of this other older petition, but they don't believe that it adequately reflects the block, because there's some prohibition, there's some dispute.
Yeah.
Surprisingly, right? The other question and final question is, you and I have talked and communicated about the faded-out speed humps on Allegheny. This is my weird, my backdoor attempt to find out what's going on with that, but would that qualify as a traffic calming thing? It's like making the city aware of an existing device, a speed hump, that has faded to the point where it's not safe?
Yeah, no, that's just general maintenance.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's been on our list of to-dos. Rain has been playing havoc with us over the past few weeks, so it's still on the list. We've got the thermo ready. We've, we've got additional recuts on that street for enhancing stop signs, enhancing the speed hump signs, as well as marking the speed humps. So in the very near future, I hope to be able to report that that's been done.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember M.
Yeah, thank you. Just on the issue of painting, you know, it's not per se the issue we're discussing right now, but I'd prefer the city to have a more frequent schedule for repainting all speed humps throughout the city, and that becoming just part of a, the routine, which it already is. But sort of stepped-up frequency, because there are a lot of speed humps that are essentially unpainted at this point, which affects the speed that people travel over them and the damage that ensues to their cars when they don't notice it.
One of the things we are shifting to is from a traffic paint process to a thermo-plastic process, which will greatly improve the longevity, as well as the appearance of those marks. So we, we still have quite a bit to do, but eventually all that will transition from traffic paint, which basically starts to fade the day after you paint it, to thermo, which, you know, lasts several months, if not in some cases, depending on the traffic volume, a year.
Great. And I just, I would urge you to look at certainly different painting designs that are present, and the effect that those designs have on speed may also be a fairly low-cost way to get higher compliance.
We have included in the Streetscape manual standardization for speed hump, as well as crosswalk markings. So we, we are attempting to move forward in a, in a, a very finite way in terms of what's marked where, but if people have questions about that or...
Could you just send around the page reference for that after the meeting?
Sure.
Thank you. You, oh, you went through some street calming projects, and I just wanted to go through sort of my experience of calming projects that have come up sort of secondarily. First, in six years, there have been no speed hump requests in Ward 2 that I'm aware of.
There's been a lot of general discussion about the Long Branch Sligo neighborhood, but lots of issues that kind of have kept that from gaining enough momentum to move forward.
And so what I heard you describe at the beginning of the meeting was basically that for, I can't remember what time period you described, but we're at sort of no net gain of speed humps for six or eight years, whatever the period is you looked at.
Well, five years is when I went back.
Five years, okay. And then in Ward 2, the, the sort of three projects are the, the Ethan Allen, New Hampshire Gateway Project, where there's some streets calming, street, whatever it's called, traffic calming, built into the design of the buses and the bike lanes and things that, you know, none of that involves speed humps. It's all about design of the roadway. You mentioned the Flower Avenue, Central Avenue project, which didn't go anywhere, but the process was really about bump outs, one-way stop signs, speed tables. So that's another example of, of a process in which residents were very engaged and that didn't, you know, lead to speed humps. And then the third, the sidewalk project on Colby, which has some, you know, sort of safety-related components to it, and the one at the junction of Jackson and, what is that, Jackson Boyd, where there's a bump out on Boy, on Jackson, excuse me, going towards Carroll, to protect the cars that were previously hit a couple of times by cars going around fast. You know, that's another example of non-speed hump-related infrastructure change. So I appreciate that, at least for me, in Ward 2, the experiences have all been really comprehensive looks at what would make, what would be the best solution in the best place, and it doesn't seem like for those, for all those projects that I've seen, that there's been any, that our current regulations and policies are preventing people from realizing what they, the options they have available to them. I wanted to ask about the speed hump. I guess my, I have a couple of concerns. First, I support as a policy matter us seeking legislation to allow us to lower our speed limit on residential streets. Second, I, I believe, I'd like you to confirm, that the Montgomery County design, the speed that that's rated for is either 15 or 20 miles per hour. 20 miles per hour. So I, I guess I have a hard time understanding the value of having a speed hump that's designed for, designed for 20 miles an hour, which you can go faster than that without your car hitting the bottom in, for many or most cars. I sort of wonder whether there's value in a speed hump like that at all, given that these things cost us $4,000 or $5,000, I think you've said in the past, for installation. And I'm frankly interested in and somewhat supportive of the, what I think are two designs that exist in the city. One is the sort of, a more standard city design, and the other one is the Maple Avenue special, which is a really big design. And certainly, the other design, my belief is that it is something that you do have to slow down significantly further than 20 miles an hour to go over. And so if we're, if it's actually going to be a valid traffic calming measure, you know, I prefer that design because it achieves something that you don't get from, from the 20 mile an hour-rated county design. I just don't know what the value is, again, of a 20 mile an hour-designed speed hump. We've had discussions in the past about having bike cut-throughs on speed humps, which I'm supportive of. I've seen those, I've experienced those in other jurisdictions in the West Coast and DC, where there is a cut for a bike tire that is on the side. So I'm supportive of, you know, that kind of direction, of trying to figure out if there's some standardized way we can, we can fit bikes in. But frankly, as a cyclist, it's a, when I don't slow down over speed humps, I shouldn't be slowing down over speed humps. A vehicle on the road is supposed to be obeying the same laws, and if a speed hump says 5 miles per hour, I should be going 5 miles per hour over the speed hump. And if I want to have a comfortable experience going over that speed hump, I slow down to 5 miles an hour, and it's just fine. So I'm both supportive of the cuts, but also supportive of bikes just doing what we expect cars to do when they get to a 5 mile per hour sign. And I guess in general, I would prefer that, in terms of changing our speed hump designs, that we seek state legislation, we get state legislation, we look at speed limits that we're going to seek on city roads, and then think about, at that future point in time, the designs that we should be using in the city. But until then, we continue to allow residents to, to, to make a choice. But with the city staff using the traffic count data and other information that you suggested, saying, what are we actually trying to achieve on this street? Is the goal really to get cars to go 20 miles an hour on the street? Or is it a place where there's, you know, the real danger, and we're actually seeking the goal of something that's significantly slower than that? So I noted on, you know, the Flower Avenue corner, where there's speed tables, on the Boyd-Jackson intersection, where there's, you know, a couple of humps that you go over to go around those corners, those are both places where features were designed to really get a level of change in behavior that's different than 20 miles per hour, and those not, are not, both not necessarily speed humps per se, because they're, they're at intersections. But, you know, that's the kind of sort of design that I'm sort of supportive of. And the last thing I wanted to say was, was really just in terms of what we're seeking when we look at traffic count data. The previous police chief on a couple of occasions came and spoke to us. One was when the traffic was detouring because of the New Hampshire Avenue Bridge closure and through some of the Ward 2 neighborhoods. And what the traffic counts found was that most cars are going the speed limit. But most people are worried about their son or daughter or relative or themselves dying, not because of what most cars do, but because of what the 10% are doing. And so I, I think of that focus on, you know, what's, what's happening in general on the street, and then what's happening for 10% of cars or some, some upper fraction. And that's where, as you said, if there's truly no one speeding at all, zero, then that's, that there's a very low priority there. But if you have, you know, 10% of cars are going 35, 40 miles an hour, that 10% is enough to create the safety risk that I think people correctly believe affects their, their ability to enjoy and feel safe in their neighborhood. So I just, I would just want us to, to use the traffic data, but have some guidance in place around, you know, what sort of thresholds we're going to look at in terms of that upper, that upper bound. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. Ms. Brithwaite, I want to thank you for coming to us and discussing this. You know, your work at Department of Public Works has been incredible. I appreciate all your detail to Ward 5. Looking at the document that says administrative regulation, on page 2, when it talks about citizens' association meeting, is a tenant association part of the definition of a citizen association?
Yeah, that's a good question. I would think that it would not be seen as a whole, given a tenant would be relative to a building, and the, the traffic calming measure would be the block. So it would probably have to be combined with a larger group that allowed people from the entire block to participate.
Okay. The, the concern I have is, you know, there are many streets in Ward 5. If you take Houston Avenue from Sligo Creek Parkway up to Roanoke, and it's primarily apartment buildings. So how could these apartment building landlords, tenants request speed calming devices when our regulations don't really look like they're meant for them?
Yeah. Well, it certainly is a challenge, particularly in some cases where we have not so much the apartment buildings, but, you know, three or four-unit garden-style apartments. So who's, you know, who's, who's able to vote there in that process? Who's able to sign the petition? And, and better still, what data do, does the city clerk's office have to evaluate whether we've reached the two-thirds percentage? So these regulations were clearly created with single-family homes in mind. So I think we need to kind of keep that in mind and determine whether or not we think we can work a system in a multifamily environment, or whether or not we need to make changes. We frankly haven't had many requests that come from streets where there's a high, you know, percentage of multifamily buildings. We certainly had requests where there's a few buildings of garden-style or accessory apartments included, and we try to, you know, keep that in mind in terms of the, the petition signature process, so that folks are able to sign on as a, as a unit versus as a single building in terms of the process. But we really don't have a process that's well-defined in a multifamily or multi-unit arrangement.
You know, I think part of the problem is that we don't have more tenants requesting this, is because when they look at, you know, the paperwork, they feel that it doesn't apply to them. Because I've had people ask me about the process, and, you know, I've referred them to start by looking at the website, and I've never heard back from them. So, you know, I think if there's some way that we can, you know, say that if you're a tenant, this is what you can do, or, you know, this is the process for you, I think that would be helpful. But I don't think, as we have the documentation now or the application process, I don't think tenants believe that there's any way for them to get what they want. And then, it doesn't look like council members can initiate the process. Is that, am I correct in that assessment?
In terms of traffic calming, it's really set up at this point for a neighborhood-driven, resident-driven. In the terms of the sidewalk process, we have this sort of a way of multiple avenues for requests to get entered into the, you know, kind of start the process. With the traffic calming, it's really a neighborhood-driven, individual property-type-driven.
Could your staff evaluate whether or not it makes sense to have a council member be able to initiate the process? That would be helpful.
Yeah, I think so. I mean, one of the things that I think in looking back at this and, and only guessing what was in the minds of the council 20 years ago when they established this, I think they were trying to make sure that there was neighborhood vetting before it got to the council. So they were trying to establish a process that sort of got people out of the woodwork talking about this before it, it came in front of the council, so that the council wouldn't be faced with, you know, three people come into a meeting, say, hey, we support this, they pass it, and then 10 people come into the next meeting saying, I didn't know anything about this, what are you doing? So I was trying to get at getting that sort of ground-truthing neighborhood process started far before it, it ever made its way into the council doors. So I think that was the intention behind the way this was established. So if it was a, you know, if we did add avenues to the regulations that allowed a council person to initiate a request, we'd have to figure out how to make sure it had that same sort of, you know, ability to, to spread the information across the neighborhood like a door-to-door petition would.
Okay. I look forward to the information you provide us. Thank you.
Councilmember Joe.
Building on what Councilmember Jarrett was just asking, it would seem to me that perhaps a council-initiated process might be desirable in a case where you have a block that is virtually all tenants, and that then the council member can initiate the process, but the process basically would require the council member, with whatever volunteer help he or she can get, to talk to the tenants in those buildings. Because I think ultimately, if we're going to have tenants be able to have a voice, and I'm thinking, for example, in my ward, Lockney and Kennewick, which have about 10 quads on each street, that's 20 times 4, you're talking about 80 households. A lot of work, but it would take a more of a human process to get the, the thing ratified by the tenants, saying, yeah, yeah, we're glad that Mr. Smith started this, and we endorse it, so that you get to the same point, rather than just saying, you know, tenants have to start it because you're the resident. That's an idea. Questions that I have, I would just like to, you go back five years, but if we go back a few more years before that and recollect the work that Department of Public Works did in my ward in New Hampshire Gardens, I guess this was done in about 2006, and is one of the very first times that traffic calming was, was, the, the issue was organized in an organized sort of way, because I think staff at that time was trying to figure out sort of, you know, what would be an equitable way of doing this.
Yeah, well, that, that whole request was generated by the Housing and Community Development Office, and they had grant funds available. So they were, they solicited neighborhoods to, to request traffic calming on a large scale versus an individual street, and then they got requests from a number of neighborhoods and selected the three that they wanted to move forward with in a planning process.
That, to me, that, I, I bring that up because the, the product of that was, in my opinion, very successful. There were, for part of it, we included a hiring a traffic consultant to do an origin debt. destination survey to see how much of the traffic that was alleged to be cut-through traffic on Wildwood and Glen Side was indeed not necessarily cut-through traffic, but just residents coming home or leaving home. Um, and it ended up resulting in a number of traffic circles being developed, installed, four to be exact, two of them which are heavily planted and two that are just sort of, um, masonry things, cobblestone that can be driven over by school buses and fire engines. There was a, a traffic table put in at the entrance to, um, at Merlewood and Glen Side, which is at the entrance to the, uh, Becca Lily Park, uh, that has served, uh, the community very well, because it literally is one of those places, this is an example, a good example of where you have to literally come to a stop in order to get up and over that, that, that traffic table. And I think, you know, rarely do we, would, would I agree that we would ever want to force people to slow down to that extent. But I do think there are examples in the city where it's just virtually paramount that, uh, you know, a stop sign's just not going to work, or a, a speed hump is just not going to work. Uh, and I think that the work that was done in, in about five, forty, four or five years ago on Erskine Street was a, another successful example of Department of Public Works patiently working with the community to come up with a combination of, of features that I think everybody in that community, the Hillwood Manor community, is really, really pleased with. At least I haven't heard any, heard any, uh, expressions of, of failure in that regard. So I, I mean, I want to make sure, because I, you know, I've often kind of gotten on my, uh, high horse about speed bumps, uh, but, but, you know, the, the successes, in my opinion, far outweigh. Now, can you describe what is the Montgomery County standard?
Sure. Yeah. I realized we didn't have any, I should have included in there kind of a diagram of the speed hump, uh, profile. Basically, the Montgomery County, uh, speed hump is a three-inch high at its highest point, and it's elliptical, so it's entirely smooth, the, the hump is smooth, it's equal distance across.
It's a smooth radius.
Yep. Smooth radius, and it's, um, it's 12 feet, uh, from end to end. So six feet up to the, the highest point and six feet down. Oftentimes, people don't realize how wide it is, but speed humps are 12 feet wide, even though you think it's something less, a few feet, uh, it's actually 12 feet wide. So that's, um, basically, typically, those are three to four inches at their, at their highest and an equal radius, um, from end to end. Uh, the city, uh, speed hump, uh, evolved from something that started out like that to one that had at its center, uh, a higher hump on top of the, of the bump. It's still, um, required to be within the three to four inch, uh, height at its, at its center. However, coming up to that, rather than having this smooth elliptical or radius shape, you actually kind of go up, then go down, then go up again.
Okay.
And that, that center bump is 32 inches wide, so the center bump on top of the speed hump, uh, has a, has a defined, um, start and end as well. But again, the speed hump itself is over a 12-foot, uh, wide span of space.
I, I just would like to go on record as saying that I would strongly favor our using the Montgomery standard as, as future speed bumps are installed and as from time to time when we have to do repaving and they have to be replaced, that that would be the replacement. Uh, and I've, I've, I've talked about this, uh, previously, um, because I think there's merit in having a standard throughout the city so that drivers more or less understand what's going to happen to their vehicle and to their passengers when they come across a speed bump in, in Tacoma Park.
Yeah, that's why we have them marked with the five mile an hour speed limit, just to distinguish them.
Just to make sure, yeah.
From the other type.
Yeah.
In the past, we've allowed residents to select which kind they wanted.
Right.
So for instance, on Ritchie Avenue, the four, four speed humps we installed, we have two of each. Uh, county standard, city standard, county standard, city standard, at the residents' request. So, uh, depending on whose house it was in front of and how they felt about it.
Yeah. I, I understand the desire to try to make everybody happy, but I think that a standardization, with some exceptions, I mean, I think you always have to allow some room for, for discretion because of engineering situations that might predicate, uh, a certain modification to a design. So at least you have a standard that you, that you can deviate from, and you can say to us, well, this is why. Now, there's been a lot of conversation about lowering speed limits on certain streets. My concern is, and, and I understand why, because there's some narrow streets with cars parked on both sides, and effectively you've got one lane of through traffic, and if they come to, two cars come facing each other, one has to dip to the side and let the other one pass. But those are scary streets for parents and their children, or even people getting out of their car, opening their car doors. Um, my, my feeling, though, is that when you begin to vary the basic speed limit, uh, you're asking drivers who are not local to be paying attention as to what the speed limit might be. And they're not going to be seeing speed limit signs. You don't look for those, most of us, when we're driving. We just know what the speed limit is and we do it. So what I would think would be preferable would be to keep the speed limit, but to design, to install speed humps or other traffic calming devices that get people to slow down below that speed limit by however how much we need them. And if that requires bump outs or chicanes or, or just whatever you can do that creates the perception, that's where people perceive that they need to slow down because there's a pinch or, or a twist or something like that, that we use that technique, uh, to get people to go down below the speed limit where we need them to go below the speed limit, rather than just say, well, the speed limit on this street's 15 miles an hour, because I think it'll drive the police up, up the wall trying to, to enforce varying speed limits in various locations. So that's just, oh, one other question. Do we have any idea how many speed humps?
I can give you that information. I don't recall.
No, I just thought maybe it was, no, I don't want you to go to that trouble. I just hate to think we have to have somebody out there counting them all, but there must be a bunch.
Yeah, we have a, an inventory of them, so.
Do you really?
I can, I can pull that information, information up.
Yeah. I'd be curious to know, but I don't want anybody to do any extra work on that. Thank you so much.
Sure.
Have you ever seen it?
Oh, sorry. I just wanted, before I forget, speak to the issue that Tim raised about, you know, why slow down to five miles an hour, why slow down to 20 miles an hour? I mean, uh, for traffic engineers, ideally, what they'd like to have is consistent speed throughout the roadway, so that a traffic engineer doesn't want to have a street where you drive and then slow down and then speed up and then slow down. And in fact, from an environmental point of view, it has its negative impacts as well from greenhouse gas emissions and things like that. So what the traffic engineers are trying to do is establish a roadway design and a traffic calming design that keeps people at a set speed throughout the street. So that's kind of why the Montgomery County standard at 20 miles an hour, because it's trying to establish what the safe speed is and encourage consistency, not slow down, speed up, but just, you know, if you know you got to go over this hump that's 20 miles an hour, you'll just keep your speed at 20 miles an hour so you can go over the hump and carry on and not have the slow-down, speed-up situation that you have, uh, with speed humps like the city standard. So from a traffic engineering point of view, what they're trying to establish is consistent speed throughout, uh, the block, not, not slowing down and speeding up. They don't really, their, their idea is not to sort of have you suddenly hit the brakes because we narrowed the road. They want you to perceive that and slow, drive consistently slower through the, through the entire block as a result of the traffic calming measures.
Can I respond to that? Which is that, I mean, a financial planner's goal is to have the economy earn a steady rate of 8% growth every year ad infinitum for all retirement funds, but, but human behavior doesn't work that way, right? So I know that's what traffic engineers want on perfectly straight roads, that like everything else is nice and they're the right width and, you know, the cars that are parked in the sides are all parked well as opposed to poorly, right? But that's not the world we live in. We live in a world where there are sharp bends on steep turns and where there is a deaf child in the middle of the block, or there's just a pile of kids on one street, but not on another street, and people perceive the need to be safer. Or where there's a handful of dangerous drivers who, for whatever reason, use one street because that's a cut-through on their, on their, their map app. Uh, and so those things create risk factors for people that deviate from the, the perfect world that engineers live in. So I think we need to be able to be to, to the point that, um, a member of the public read in his letter today about having a responsive local government. We need to be able to build some of that customization, and Councilmember Schultz spoke to that as well, into our approach. And that's what I see when we, when we look at the more extreme speed, speed humps. It's that there's a, there's a situation in that spot where the lesser of two evils is having cars slow down and speed up versus the risk to public safety or perceived risk to public safety.
Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. And, uh, thank you for being with us tonight. Appreciate the information. You may remember that, uh, when this process was drawn up, uh, I was on the council at that time, and I would just like to answer the one question is, uh, you know, why, uh, didn't we have a process in there for the council member to bring it forward? And that's because I voted against that. I had been deeply entrenched in, uh, speed bump discussions, uh, for many months by that point, and realized that these are contentious issues that, uh, bring a lot of, uh, opinions to this council chambers, and it seemed best to have the residents, uh, put forward their ideas and desires and to be the focal point of the process. You mentioned there are different styles in Tacoma Park right now, and, and Ritchie Avenue has, uh, the pleasure of representing the standard, uh, the now-standard Tacoma Park, uh, speed bump, but also the Montgomery County standard. So I encourage my colleagues to, uh, travel Ritchie Avenue and, and compare the two different types of speed bumps, uh, get a better idea. But on your way there, you might want to go up Maple Avenue so that you understand that, uh, we have standard Tacoma Park speed bumps, but there are also other speed bumps, uh, the most drastic of which are on, on the upper Maple Avenue, going from Philadelphia up to Carroll. You heard, uh, our peace delegate just moan because he's used to going over those on, uh, the buses, and they are very harsh and very difficult for people who have back problems. And, uh, our peace delegate is, can testify to that. Uh, but we do have some other streets that have some non-standard, uh, speed bumps that were, um, kind of insisted upon by various members of this council in the past, uh, past members of this council. But we don't do that anymore, do we?
No, we, um, you know, the city code, uh, specifies a three to four inch, uh, speed hump height, so we, uh, maintain that height. Now, the profile can vary both by installation methods and difficulty of making the asphalt do exactly what you want, as well as time and age, and tire wear will distort the size of a speed hump, too. Um, so we have a, we have a, um, model, we have a profile that we provide to both our contractor as well as utility contractors when they reinstall speed humps. So we have a dimension that they're supposed to meet at various phases throughout that 12-foot, um, width. We do have cases where they're not installed correctly. In some cases, if they're bad, we make them take them out and put them back again. We also sort of have the historic speed humps that are not to the point of being in bad enough shape but are within that three to four inch profile, and we leave. The Maple Avenue speed humps, I don't know if anybody wants me to go through that history, but that was.
No, 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 no.
That was an established height of four and a half inch by the council. So they, those were built, um, built to that four and a half inch height.
But if they were damaged at this point, they would be replaced with standard?
I, I don't know. That would be a matter we take to the council, since the council established that four and a half inch height as, as a mandate for those speed humps. We were directed to install them at that profile, so I would think it would be a council decision. Uh, we certainly, on a staff level, wouldn't go back and put, put in a city standard.
All right. It's getting late, and I want to tell you that I'm very disappointed, uh, that, uh, this council has talked entirely about speed bumps tonight, when we're talking about traffic calming measures.
Yeah.
And we have completely neglected the other proposals, the other, uh, types of, uh, traffic calming measures, some of which we have found to be very helpful on Ritchie Avenue, the, the bump outs, I think you call them.
Yep.
Uh, have been very effective in slowing traffic. It's sometimes aggravating, but it works.
Yes, yes.
And, um, so I just, uh, encourage my colleagues to, when you think about traffic calming, don't just think about the speed bumps. There's a lot of issues of speed bumps, there are a lot of, maybe some issues with the other things, but we haven't really tried the other traffic calming measures so much in Tacoma Park. And I think there's some traffic calming measures that we don't even have on the table in Tacoma Park yet that, uh, are used other places around the world that may be of value to us.
Yeah, good point. Yeah, we certainly have made an effort to try to bring in new, new methods, uh, but probably percentage-wise, we have more speed humps than others. I would say in the last five or six years, though, that, that has not been the case. Most of what we've installed has been alternative to speed humps or, or partnership with speed humps with, uh, other measures.
Great. I'll be watching for my colleagues on Ritchie Avenue this week. Thank you.
All right. I'll, uh, wrap us up then, a couple of things. One is, um, as we were sitting here, um, I was going back and forth with Councilmember Mail and just looking at the administrative regulation, um, and I think that's a document that can just be changed, the council doesn't have to vote on it. And thinking about the Safe Roadways Committee's, um, comments, um, when you do look under procedures, Roman numeral, one says, "Request for Speed Hump Installations." That could easily be changed to "Request for Traffic Calming." And honestly, the only other place that, and it's late, so we may have missed it, but is on the back page, the requested traffic calming devices, just kind of reviewing that list and making sure that it, it does include, um, all the options for someone. And I think, and I did check the city website, and I think it, it does, it doesn't emphasize the speed humps, but it did seem that the administrative regulation kind of just, I think inadvertently probably left that impression, particularly with that Roman numeral. So if we could just change that.
Mayor?
Yes, yeah.
Excuse me, I would, uh, suggest that if we were going to change, uh, this, that we might want the fire department to review it and, with their comments.
This was just the, I was just saying the administrative regulation. You want the?
I would suggest that Public Works checks with the fire department, uh, as they make changes, because this does affect their response. The traffic calming measures can affect, uh, response times for the fire department.
Okay.
Okay. Can I ask one other question?
Yeah.
Do we want residents to be able to request traffic calming devices to be removed? That's not a, not clear right now.
We do have very weird language in the administrative regulation about that. It's basically saying you can't take anything out if it was installed before 2003.
So that's a policy question for council?
Yeah. And I think it was because they made these changes in 2003, they didn't want to worry anybody that retroactively go back and change them, so. I think we're far past that. I don't think anybody remembers what happened before 2003.
Traffic calming?
No.
Okay. I just, we don't need the police, we don't need the fire department to look at it.
Okay.
I was just, I clarified for, with Councilmember Siemens, I'm changing the word "speed hump" to "traffic calming."
Not adding over there.
No, I'm just, that, yeah. That's what we're doing there. All right.
And can I, I'd be remiss if I didn't put, point out in miscellaneous, it says that the council can initiate installation of traffic calming, uh, in certain cases, uh, near parks and playgrounds. So we do have the ability of council to initiate that outside of the other areas.
It's only parks and playgrounds.
Right.
All right. So I'm going to go through, Councilmember Schultz?
Do we, might we, because there's some interest in these regulations, and I realize the regulations are the duty of the staff to formulate, but it sounds to me like, you know, the removal, there's just a number of things here that might.
Well, that's what I'm going to go, I'm just about to go through right now.
Okay, no.
So if I miss anything, let me know, but I've been taking notes, and I think we're not going to resolve all the issues tonight, so, um, this is the list I had. Um, one was just going back and taking out the emphasis on speed humps, um, in the administrative regulations. The other is, I've heard varying, um, comments regarding what, if we wanted to move toward the Montgomery County standard for the speed humps, I think that needs to be a deeper conversation, and we'll schedule a work session on that in the future. conversation, and we'll schedule a work session on that in the future, and we'll work with the Director of Public Works to do that. On adding an analysis of the traffic calming, I looked to the Director of Public Works to ask, looking this over, it looks like that might have to go in the city code, and if that's the case, then that has to come back to council. And so that would be one thing, and what language we would want in there. So that's one thing to go back to the code and to have us do a work session, discuss that. Where am I also, like, sorry, I wrote too many notes. The other thing was looking at multifamily and whether or not multifamily dwellings can have a better say in this process. The other was, I had the removal, as we were just talking about, to clean up that language. The initiating the request by a council person.
Just to clarify on the removal, it sounds like it's really a policy call for the council to discuss.
Right. I'm just, this is the list of things we have to come back to, and I want to have the Director of Public Works just sort of help us identify, is it code, is it in the administrative record? What is the policy issue we need to clarify as we're moving forward? Then, so I think those were the things I had as a list of kind of going back and figuring out the policies, is this code, is this whatever? And then we can lump some of these together and do a work session, though I believe we would just want a work session on thinking about whether or not we want to go to the Montgomery County standard on the speed bumps, but maybe some of these others can be lumped together. The two other things I had on my list was, I would ask that we go back and look at this policy and think about steps to fit into our racial equity framework. And I'm looking at the acting city manager, because I think this might be a place, since we became members of GAR, that they may be able to help us. And I can't, the GAR stands for the, I can't remember either, but anyway, it's an organization that we've become members of that helped put in place, you know, we look at policies and procedures through a racial equity lens, so they may be able to help us on that. And then the final thing is just a reminder, because this council member Mail brought this up about looking at state legislation on speed limits on local streets, is that we are going to need to recommend what we want to put forward for MML soon, and that might be something that this council decides we want to support this year or recommend to MML. Those are all the things that I heard that I have on my list. Did I miss one?
No, no, I think that covers the ones, but I think in the process, all of us do some homework and read through this document, this petition process and installations document, make sure we understand what's there and what's not there, and make sure we're thorough in all those things.
Okay. Sound good? Do you need anything else from us?
Yep.
Okay. Great. All right. Thank you very much. More to come.
The GAR is the government line.
Thank you. Oh, actually, sorry, Ms. Bayley, I did have one other thing. I'm terribly sorry. It was the replacing of, so right now, like on Allegheny, if the, since the speed bumps there are need, work need to be replaced, and we just automatically do that right now, correct?
Well, in Allegheny Avenue, they need to be marked, they're just the third...
Oh, okay.
In cases where speed bumps have worn out or started to break apart, we just, as a routine measure, you know, replace those with whatever we thought was there before.
Right. And so I think I'd like to add that to a list, and it's a policy question for council to come back to, is whether or not we want to actually put in a policy to say that at that time, it should be reviewed, is that the appropriate traffic calming for that area?
Gotcha.
So...
A perfect case in point is the repaving of all the roads in New Hampshire Gardens by the WSSC, which we hope will be imminent. And we know that they're going, it's going to be required that all the speed bumps there will have to be removed and replaced, and it would be a fine time to figure out, you know, what the replacements should be. Hopefully, they would be uniform.
Yep. Now, I know that happened on Westmoreland, too, when they did, there was...
Oh, yeah.
The opportunity to revisit. So, anyway, I thank you, I thank the Safe Roadways Committee. I don't think any of us thought we were going to solve all these issues tonight, but I think we've moved ourselves down the road. And we will come back to it. Thank you. All right. The last item we have this evening is a discussion of having police officers at city council meetings. This is a conversation we've had a couple of times over the last few years. I don't know if the acting city manager wants to...
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Beginning, in or around late 2015, the city manager requested the regular presence of a police officer at your weekly council meetings. The request was made in the interest of ensuring the safety of those present at the meetings. While there are almost always officers in the building, the sense was that, at the time, an officer being present at the meetings would enable them to assess a potential situation and assist in de-escalation if necessary, rather than just responding to an incident that might have occurred. Since the request was made, an officer has been present at most meetings, although they're not always in attendance for the entire meeting, depending on whether there are more urgent matters requiring their attention. At a recent administrative session that you all held on March 22nd geared towards emergency responses and safety, you briefly discussed your preferences regarding the presence of a police officer at council meetings as part of the larger discussion. And at that meeting, there was some agreement to consider the topic further at a regular business meeting, and that's the point of this item.
Okay. Thank you. All right. I know some people have spoken to this before, so whoever wants to kick us off, and then we'll just sort of do a hand vote to moves on. Councilmember Mail.
Yeah, I wanted to weigh in on this, and it's something that I feel strongly about. I didn't, in fact, even notice it when it first happened or recognize that a direction had been made. I just, after a while, realized that there was an officer in the meeting, and then there was an officer the next week, and then there was an officer the week after that. And for me, it's, I feel really strongly about this, that we're a community that talks about peace, that talks about nonviolence, that prohibits residents from, maybe ineffectively, but prohibits residents from owning handguns. We're a place that has a constrained budget, and we talk about the need to have four patrols, you know, available to be in the city protecting our 17,000 residents all the time. And I just can't square having an officer trained in lethal force, armed with handgun, taser, and wearing body armor, present in our city council meetings that are typically attended by a crowd like the one before us today, four people. We are not that important. We get 100 views on an average on a good city council meeting online, and I think that our residents deserve the attention of our police officers, not ourselves. And I feel really strongly that we should not make it our default that we have someone trained in lethal force, armed with a handgun and a taser, here to guard us against a hypothetical risk that someone chooses, comes here to do violence. And just to respond to the language in here and concerning the original March request, in that event, I don't believe that the presence of a police officer in that case resulted in de-escalation. It was an escalation. The person was forcibly restrained and escorted out of the room without any evidence that they were planning to commit violence. They were not armed. And so I think it's the exact opposite of de-escalation that we saw in the event that triggered this, this policy or this action by the city manager. So for me, there might be circumstances, there might be particular meetings where it absolutely makes sense on a case-by-case basis to have an officer present, but it doesn't speak to the way that I want to interact with residents, that I have to be guarded to have that interaction happen. And I just, it's an exceptional thing that only in recent years has even a member of Congress. And still, it's not routine, or it's not, it's not, it's not always the case. They, members of Congress will meet with public without police present. And so we're a city council, and again, a context that is not highly controversial, where we often have meetings attended by crowds like this, and I just, I just feel really strongly that that's not, it doesn't speak to our values and how we want to work with and approach residents, that we expect the worst of them. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you. I took the opposing view. I don't think the concern is so much with residents at Tacoma Park, it's that we have this open policy that anyone can walk into this building without being searched, where you would have to be searched if you went into a member of Congress's offices in DC or you went into the Senate building, because whenever I've gone there to advocate for the city of Tacoma Park, I've had to take my belt off and had to be wandered to make sure I wasn't carrying any weapons. Here, anybody can walk into this room and make a statement with a weapon. I appreciate the fact that our police department is here during our meetings. It is not so much that we hope nothing will happen, but it is nice to know that if a situation does arise, we do not have to wait very valuable minutes for the police to come up from the basement. And I would also like to say that the county council is now going to have, if residents want to come and speak at their meetings, you have to go through a search security protocol, because right now, anybody can come and speak at a county council meeting. It is, it's just the sign of the times. We need this type of security. I mean, you just never know what's going to happen. It's not so much that people in Tacoma Park are the issue. It could be somebody just traveling through the area that wants to stop here and make a statement. It could be a resident from the District of Columbia. I don't like it, but I think that we need to continue the practice of having police officers at our meetings. Thank you.
Councilmember Creasy.
Thanks, Mayor. I don't, I don't really see the need for having police officers here. I don't, to be completely honest, it doesn't give me any added security that Captain Coll, or Acting Chief Collington is sitting here, although I'm glad he's here, he's a nice guy. I just, I think it unnecessarily creates the specter of this being more high-profile than it really is. It unnecessarily sends a message to community members that we are these untouchables that need to be on this pedestal. I'm fully confident, and we've all been briefed up here confidentially by Emergency Preparedness Manager of the protocols in place in the event of an emergency or an active shooter situation. I think that that is sufficient. But I also still defer to the better judgment of the police department, that if on any given night, they believe it's appropriate to patrol through here every once in a while, that's fine. But to have a person, when we already have only four people on patrol on any given shift positioned here, it seems nonsensical. But I also understand that there's always somebody who's going to be positioned in this building somewhere if there's nothing going on. So I don't, I don't support keeping somebody here as a policy moving forward.
Councilmember Cover?
Thank you. I think, for me, I don't feel any particular threat, but I don't feel like the police are here to protect us per se as much as anybody else who happens to be in the audience. So I wouldn't say that we're deserving of any greater protection or some other sort of deference to anybody else in the community. But I think if you look at what happens, what's happened in the world and in the country of late, there are people who, it's not that they're targeting elected officials as much as just targeting kind of community and democracy and things of that sort. And so for me, we talk a lot about how we like our police officers to be out in the community. The one who's here tonight won an award for that, I think, recently. So I don't think there's any sort of, to me personally, any sort of offense or militarization by their presence, and they're here as part of the work that they do to protect the community. So I don't have a problem with it. I guess the one thing I, maybe someone could clarify, I know there's not, at any given point, there aren't a lot of people on patrol, but are the people, are the officers who are here the ones who would be out on patrol, or are they people who are here in the office doing other things, or are they here with their extra time? How does that all work out? I don't know if that's a standard answer, but I think it'd be helpful to understand that.
Yeah, I'm not sure that there's a standard answer to it either. Acting Chief Collington, did you want to speak to that? And I should also note that it's not, I've heard it referred to as a policy tonight, it's more of a practice. It's not a, it's, there's nothing codified, there's no policy stating that a police officer needs to be present.
Yes. Good evening, Acting Chief Collington. I think overall, it's just like Councilmember Smith said, it's the times that we live in. Anything at any time can occur. For us, our number one priority is protecting and saving lives. So it gives us an advantage point that we can prevent a bad situation from becoming worse. But in terms of people being inside the building, it depends on the time of the day. There's not, you may go downstairs now and there may not be anyone downstairs, they're all out on the street. You have officers coming in from time to time doing different things. So there's, during the day, yes, there's someone, always in detectives or command staff or something like that. But as the evening gets late, officers change shifts, you only have the night shift working. So if you have a situation going on in Langley Park and something happens here in the city, you're going to be about probably three minutes before the first officer arrives on scene inside the council chambers. So, you know, I certainly appreciate and respect everyone's comments, you know, if you feel safe, but, you know, we'd rather be cautious than reactive.
Is the person, if not yourself, maybe, but another officer here, is that someone who would otherwise, if they weren't, be out on patrol? Or are they not one of the regular patrollers?
Those are the patrollers. Depends on the time of the day. Like, our shifts are from eight to eight, so most of the time, the officers that work in the day shift are the ones that are inside the council chambers. So they'll be here for a couple of hours to make sure that the night shift gets settled, get the roll call, handle any calls that may be holding, and then they'll come and relieve the day shift officer, and he'll go on for the evening.
Okay.
Can I ask one follow? So when we, when we see there's an officer in the present, and then that officer leaves and swaps out with another one, that's the day shift?
Yes.
Patrol officer leaving, and then the patrol comes in?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz?
I have a question. Is it, do we have a notion as to what other municipalities do at their regular public council meetings around this area?
Yes, I do know of two municipalities where they do have police officers in the council chambers. One is Forest Heights, that I don't know if any of you recall, a few years back, they had a lot of altercations inside the council meetings. That's Forest Heights over in Prince George County.
Okay.
And then they had another one in Capitol Heights, this small municipality over in Capitol Heights, they had police officers inside the council. And then recently, because I have a close friend that works for Glenard, the city of Glenard, they always have police officers in their council meetings. But now, just since they just changed council, I think where the confrontations were occurring, those people are no longer serving. So it's not uncommon to have police officers in council chambers.
It's not uncommon to have police officers in council chambers. Okay. Thank you for that answer. I guess I have a different recollection of what happened in 2015, and I do think that it was alarming, and fortunately, there were police officers...
that it was alarming. And fortunately, there were police officers in the space, sitting right there where you're standing, because they were getting ready to give their annual report on the police department's performance for that year. And were able to intercept the person before he was able to get up onto the dais, which is where he was headed. So that was an incident that alerted us to the possibilities. We haven't had any problems since, thank goodness. But I would agree with Councilmember Smith, is that this is a different, a different time. There was a time when you listened to our parents or grandparents talk. They'll tell you, oh, well, in the old days, we never bothered to lock our houses. We just, you know, nothing like that ever happened, and now you do. Well, you know, that's a sign of what's happened over the last 50, 60 years of how our society has changed. One of the things that concerns me that I take into account is that these are public meetings. They're publicized, they are scheduled, and they're open to everybody, which is good. So our meetings are notorious. It's not like that we only have these things at random times. So if anybody is of a mind to come to a place where they know there's a gathering, I mean, people don't go and commit public suicide like we just saw in Manchester in the desert, or in, you know, out in the deep, dark woods by themselves. They do it in public spaces because, because they want to send a message of some sort. And I also am aware of that during the day, that there's five public entrances to the community center that are open throughout the day. Now, how long they're open, I don't know for sure. But none of, we don't have CCTV, television on, on any of these entrances, and there's no employees that monitor the comings and goings of people in and out of our building. And, but, so it's, it just, it's a very open, very open space that, that is very welcoming. And that's, that's the way we want it. It is a community, we call it a community center for a reason. And, you know, people can penetrate all the way up to the third floor, where the, many of our city officials work, without any, anybody disturbing their path. And that's great, too. But on the other hand, I do think that we think, it's not a question of whether we think we're important here, or we don't think we're important. It has nothing to do with what we think. It's what somebody on the outside has on their mind that's important. And we don't know who they are until after the fact. And I wish it wasn't this way. But wishing it isn't going to keep us protected. And so therefore, I think it's, it's a good idea that we have somebody here from the police department, not just to protect ourselves, obviously, but to protect the public that is here, so that they can be confident at all times that there's, you know, minimizes the risk. And if, I would dare say, the vast majority of people who come out and in and out of this room during city council meetings are utterly unaware there's, or they're paying any attention, that there's a uniformed police officer sitting in this space, because people aren't focused on that. They're focused on, on the business at hand. So I don't really think, when we say it's sending a message, I don't think we're sending a message. I just don't think we're sending anything at all. We're just using some common sense that's required in 2017, because every week, we hear in the news of situations that happen. And all of these incidences, every last one of them are ones where everybody stands around afterwards and says, well, we, who would have thought?
Yeah.
You know? Why us? Why here? I mean, it's just, it's always what, what the witnesses and the survivors say. And that's, that's, that's my take on it. I just think it's reasonable, and it doesn't, doesn't do any harm to our, our city's image. And so I'll end my comments there.
Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. And I do want to thank you for being here tonight. I feel very safe because you're here. That's just because of you.
It's because I'm a nice guy.
That's right. I started out in thinking about this, you know, back in 2015. And I thought it was ridiculous when we were having officers come. And I started to notice they were coming every week, and then I heard that it was a request from the city manager. And, but I've given a lot of thought to this since then. And I think, you have to remember, I was one of the guys that argued against putting in all these cameras that we have around. They are watching the entrances. They are recording the activity going on. They aren't necessarily always monitored. But I felt like it was a ridiculous excess to worry that much about security in the building at that time. And I don't know that I've changed my opinion of that a whole lot since then. I don't think we've caught any major thieves or criminals by the use of those cameras. I think we did catch somebody rolled a log out in the Grand Avenue. That's another story. Anyways, the, ours previous city manager came from out in the Midwest, and after she came here and was here for a few months, her, the city where she used to appear in front of the, the city council every week, someone there pulled a gun and shot and killed the mayor, and a couple other, shot at other council members. So it is something that happens. I know that since I've been on, I've been on the council a long time, excuse me, and I've had threats against myself, you know, telephone threats. And it's kind of disconcerting when that happens. And I can't, I only can tell, talk about how I react to it. And one of the ways is, you don't know if I'm, if I've got a concealed carry permit or not, right? So nobody else out there does either. But seriously, the, I think it's a very difficult decision, because I don't want to be the guy that said, no, we don't need those officers here, and then something happened, and somebody get hurt. So I'm really on the fence on this one. I, I don't really know. Guess I, I'm concerned the way it stands right now. I'm on the fence, and I heard three and three. Right? Three, four, and three against.
Let me speak, and then see what you think. So for me, you know, since I've been on the council, I've been wanting us to be more and more a police department of guardians and less of warriors. And I think we're moving in that direction. And so I don't think of you being armed guards here in the chamber when I see our officers here. As you just said, Acting Chief Collington, you're a nice guy. And I think of that as nice guys and gals in our department. And when our officers are here, if I get here a few minutes beforehand, I try and go over and speak to them and talk to them, just like other city staff come to our meetings. I think of it as our police department also being at our meetings. Now, you have special training. You have special training in de-escalation, and you have special training in dealing with people with mental health issues, training I do not have. The reality is, there are more and more mental health issues, not just in our city, in our county, in our state. We are not doing a good job of dealing with those issues. I personally have been affected by that, and so has my family. And I want to serve this community as best I can, but I also want my family to feel safe. So for me, it's not that you're armed guard here. For me, it's that you are someone I trust. You are somebody who is a guardian, and somebody who does know all the other issues that are going on, if there is something that is threatening or putting my family at risk. So I don't want this to be at the expense of someone being on patrol. I think it's fine if some, last week, nobody was here from the police department. We did not have an officer at all for the entire meeting. I think if that's the case, because there are other activities or someone needs to be on patrol, that makes sense. If it's not, you know, covered the full time, that makes sense to me as well. I think putting our trust in our police department to have it as a practice, that we have an officer who is here when they can be available to be here, I think is a good practice, and I'd like us to continue that. So. Any other councilmember mail?
Yeah, I just wanted to respond to a couple of things. You know, if it's not about us and it's about the public, and to Councilmember Schultz's point about announced meetings that are regular, people know about, every single one of our city committees' meetings is public, is announced in our newsletter. They meet in this building, they meet in the recreation building, the Rec Center on New Hampshire Avenue. But public meetings, often those meetings have more people in them. There's more members of the public who simply serve on the committee, and so by default, they often have more people present. And so if we're really talking about maximizing safety in terms of public meetings, and it wasn't about us, then that would be a place we would send an officer. There's a big school right over there, and there's another one right over there. And what we've seen in this country is that schools are a bigger target, I believe, than elected officials, or at least elected officials at a municipal level. And if I had four hours to put a police officer who wasn't otherwise doing something important, which I believe you guys do, 24/7, I would put him in one of those schools. So for me, I just can't, I can't square my belief in prioritizing good use of public safety resources and what I perceive as threats to the most people, doing the, you know, the most good for the most people with having someone here. And it doesn't fit with my sense of, given that, how I want the interaction to feel with residents, who, you know, some of our residents come every week, and they know that there's a policeman here or woman here every week. And so I'd rather have the interaction not involve the presence of a police officer as a default. Again, discretionary, particular meetings, that makes sense. But I just, I just don't see it as, again, if I were, as a policy matter, if we're going to make, what is the highest priority place for a public safety, safety officer to be present for an extra four hours each week? We could have that as a policy discussion, and I just, my statement is, it wouldn't be this, this meeting at this time of night. Thank you.
I'd ask that people, it's the late hour, and I think people have expressed their opinions, so if we could do this quickly, Councilmember Kreshi?
I just wanted to...
Oh, sorry. I turned you off.
No, it's fine. I will just clarify one thing. My comments earlier were specifically based on this being a policy issue and not a practice issue. I think since it's been made clear by the acting chief and the acting city manager that this isn't a policy thing, it's a practice, officers will come periodically, come sit up here. I don't have an objection to it, because I'm not, it's not having any impact on the greater work that they're doing in the community. If we were mandating it, that would be a different story. So that begs the question, Mayor.
Mm-hmm.
After we're done with this discussion, I presume we're going to raise our hands. And are we raising our hands to, because it was not a policy?
It's not a policy. I would say that it's been a practice of our police department, and to continue with that practice when they, you know, see it is appropriate to be at council meetings, or when officers need to be at other things. So it is at the discretion of our police department.
What serves to be a policy and a practice? They're here 90% of the time since 2015.
Well, I think we haven't had, we could have a policy, but we haven't had a policy before. And that was not the request that was put before me to have this as a work session. It was to review the practice of having the police at our meetings after 2015, when the city manager requested that they start attending meetings. If we want to make this a policy discussion and have it pass a resolution, we can do that. But that was not the request for this evening. The request was to review the practice that we've had in place since 2015.
And the mayor, the only reason I raised that is because I saw that sort of disconnect there of like, what are we voting on if it's not a policy? I'll say this. I personally am speaking from my own perspective, and what I said is true. But if there's one member of this body sitting up here who feels that, as it pertains only to the council, then the community is another thing, that it's an appropriate thing, given the risks that exist, I think that should be enough. I don't think it requires a majority vote to make people feel comfortable about how they're going to govern themselves in this chamber safely. So I also have an issue with the voting aspect of it, in the sense that if one of us up here feels at any given moment they've been in a situation where they felt threatened, it shouldn't require a majority council vote to have an already, you know, a patrol officer who's in the building anyway, sit in here every once in a while or come through. So I'm sort of, I'm sort of battling with the issue, is what I just wanted to make clear. And I think that to make this a more concrete discussion, which I know will be in the future, it might make sense to...
We can have a resolution. We can have, we can have a policy resolution. So we'll end this discussion tonight, and we'll move it forward for a policy, and we'll bring a resolution to the council. Is that fine? All right. That's it. We're adjourned.
Love it, love it, love it!